They all may be.
Okay, then six o'clock. I would like to welcome everyone here this evening. And please take your seats. And make sure that your cell phones are either on move or shut off and please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Again, I'd like to welcome you all to our county commission meeting for this evening and Patty, please take roll.
Here.
Dan.
Here.
Don.
Here.
Wanda.
Here.
Here. Any, any members of the county commission that would have any financial conflict of interest for this evening?
I do not.
I do not.
I do not?
I do not.
I have a conflict with part two of the claims and I will be abstaining.
Okay. Excuse me. Uh, this time I would need a motion to approve the agenda.
I I would move to approve the amended agenda. It's my understanding that item twenty relative to the October twenty twenty four auditor treasurer's report and pooled cash report and the third quarter MI report will not be discussed tonight.
Scratch and everything but choose, choose race for post election. Um, second, the amended motion for the agenda.
Do you have a motion to approve the agenda with the, the changes to number twenty other than the choose races for the post-election audit? We will do that. Other than that, twenty is striked from the agenda. Have a motion as second.
Is there a reason for that?
The, the reports weren't finished yet.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Nay. Motion carries. Now's the time for public comment. Public comment is a time for persons to address the body on any subject. No action may be taken on the matter raised under this item of the agenda until the matter itself has been specifically included on an agenda as an item upon which action will be taken. Each person has up to three minutes to speak. There shall be no personal attacks against the members of this body, county staff, individuals, or organizations. The chair has the authority to enforce this policy. Failure to adhere to these rules may result in forfeiture of the remaining speaking time. We do have a few minutes, so at this time I would ask for open up for public comment.
There'll be time if it's, if it's an agenda item too.
Yes, and at this point in time for public comment, Roger Rispie, Risty.
Do we, we want to do that or are we?
We want to do.
Do you want to speak now or do you want to speak during our discussion on the?
On, on the.
On the insurance issue.
On the insurance issue because that is on the agenda.
Didn't have time to do that last.
Okay. Basically, you'll use your three minutes at this point.
I, Mr. Chair, I, I guess if it's okay with the state, I'd almost rather that be.
Part of the interview discussion.
If you think that's okay, because because then we can ask questions, so.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay, sounds good. Then we have. These are all.
Lucy Loveau.
This is Sonia.
Sonia.
Yeah.
So.
Julia.
Okay.
And Dan.
Dan.
Okay. Any other one that wants to speak at public comment at this point in time? Hearing seeing none. Um, we do have five minutes to the next agenda item, which is. Lucy?
Yeah, you can do, yeah, it's not a.
Not something that people want.
The only one we'd have to wait is the reading of the floodplain ordinance and the rezone one. Those would have to be on.
So we can go with. Medical cannabis.
You can go all the way up to.
We could choose the races.
Okay.
For post-election audit.
Let's do that and get it out of the way. So at this point in time, we'll choose the races for the post election audit.
And I've got all the races in here, the, all the amendments, the measures statewide.
And we're just doing one or two?
Two.
Measure twenty-eight?
Let Ryan do the second one.
I already got.
Okay.
President. Okay, let's back up to the on the agenda then to the medical cannabis renewals.
No.
Is Lucy here?
Yeah, she's here.
Okay, Lucy.
Welcome.
Thank you.
You have to turn your microphone on.
Oh, yes.
There you go.
Work for you.
Well, you have to put it up now because there you.
There you go.
It's for our Apple viewers.
What to do?
Somebody has to.
So I'm here as the chair for the board of mental illness for Yankton County. And I'm here on a couple of issues and initially the first issue I'd like to address is I'd like to have the county appoint a couple more alternate chair members. Uh, right now we have two chairpersons and an one alternate and we'd like to have a couple more alternates just in case. Well, for obvious reasons.
Alternate chair people?
No, alternate board members.
Okay.
So I currently have Val Larson and Mark Catterhagen sitting as my, um, board members. And I have a proposal to appoint Barb Perk and Jerry Christians.
Rob, is that something that needs to be advertised or, or that's just up to her to appoint who should? Okay.
She has to find somebody who's willing to serve.
Yeah, that's gotta be the.
Tuesdays and Fridays.
That is the hard part dream. Bad weather and everything. So, so these two credentials I've handed, um, the OSF office, I've talked to them. They both are willing to serve as alternates. Um, they both are retired from the state hospital, um, served thirty years there, been lifelong residents of Yankton County. So I would ask that you appoint them as alternate board members.
Your turn. The.
Fire vote or motion?
I'd move to appoint Barb Perk and Jerry Christians as alternate board members.
Take it.
Have a motion by Wanda, second by Ryan to approve the two candidates that Lucy has presented to us. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Nay. Motion carries. Congratulations.
Thank you. The second issue that I'd like to address with you, it's something nobody wants to ever talk about and it's a pay increase. When I started this job in July of twenty twelve, the board chair was making ninety dollars an hour.
How many?
Ninety.
Okay.
Um, I came in in two thousand seventeen. I have, I'm a pack rat, so I have the agenda from then and I asked for a raise at that time and you granted me a raise of a hundred dollars. Uh, yeah, a hundred dollars an hour at that time. Since two thousand seventeen, uh, I have not asked for a raise. And I would ask for a raise right now. Uh, um, I've looked and I would propose that I, uh, the raise be a hundred and twenty dollars. I've come up with that number, um, a couple of reasons, since I haven't been here for seven years asking for a raise. And in addition, uh, the court-appointed attorneys in the county or in the state make a hundred and fifteen dollars an hour. So they're currently making more than our board chairs are. Um, in addition, the court-appointed attorneys get a cost of living increase every year. And it's been anywhere from six dollars to eight dollars a year that they've got a cost increase.
Um, I have two questions. My first one always is where were you during budget? Not here.
Not here.
Okay.
I, so can I answer? Also, although I'm the Yankton County chair, I am paid by other counties, so my, my fees and what I have paid is, does not come all from Yankton County.
I get that. My second question is, um, and I recognize that you haven't had an, an increase in pace for seven years since two thousand seventeen because you brought your paperwork. Would you be objecting to whatever the court-appointed attorney rate is? Because right now it's one fifteen and my understanding is it's going to go up somewhat as of the first of the year. I don't personally know what that is.
And I don't think they've indicated. Have they, Rob, come up with anything? And I'm not going to split hairs. Two dollars, three dollars difference. If, if the board wants to, or if the commission wants to do that, I don't have any problem with that. Um, but I would ask then that I get the increases, the cost of living increases that the court-appointed attorney fees get when, every year that they get. So rather than just having me come back in seven more years or.
Or two years or.
Or next year.
Or next year. I, yeah, that's right. So that's, that's my initial request. And then also, um, I'm asking for an increase in the board members' fees that they are paid.
What are they paid?
They are paid thirty dollars an hour. When I started in two twenty twelve, that's what they were paid. They've never gotten an increase. So I would ask that, um, they get an increase of up to fifty dollars an hour. That's been twelve years.
Uh, what would that, uh, how would that impact the budget? Like, how many hours are we talking per year? And, you know, that's twenty dollars per person per hour. I kind of, I'd like to know the impact that that has on our budget.
Hours are different each month.
I'm sorry?
The hours are different.
Your things not on.
But I mean, if we knew the average, like, this is what we paid the last few years and then this is what, you know, because I, I don't know what that is.
Well.
And we're almost doubling it, not, you know, not quite, but we're going from thirty to fifties.
And I will tell you that, um, the mental health has not slowed down.
True.
But the core center.
You mean the commitments. Commitments have slowed down.
And everything. Commitments have slowed down. The core center up at the hospital has made a substantial difference. And then all the regional centers that have been set up in the state have made a substantial. So I, I can't even guess really how many hearings I do a month that are Yankton County. I would tell you they're substantially lower than, than they have been in the past. I guess Rob, Rob and the state's attorneys are all here. They can vouch for that also.
There was one today, but you, one, when I, it's one or two, it's five, six a month.
Are your, are your, are your board members, that's, they, they'd like an increase, I guess, from the few I know, kind of just do this as a voluntary, you know, giving back to the community or are they going to quit if we don't go to fifty dollars an hour? I mean, a couple that I've spoken, spoke, they, they just do it because, uh, 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 because they're retired and they do it as an obligation. I've never had any of them come to me and say they, they are doing it for the money.
I, I have a question and maybe it's obvious to everybody else. So the other counties would be paying that or would Yankton County be paying for, let I say a Charles Mix County?
Charles Mix would pay for their own county. I bill every county separately.
That's, that's what I was.
Do all the counties pay us back?
Except the.
There are five counties that are on my list and I.
And we, do we have to accept people from them even though they don't pay us?
HSC may potentially have to accept them, but I do not do hearings for them.
Okay.
And I've written to all of them and they know my position and they have to scramble to figure something out, but. I don't know, because I quit doing their hearings years ago.
Because they don't pay.
Because they don't pay. And it's one thing for me to say I will do hearings free, but it's another hearing for the state's attorney or my attorney, my attorneys to do that. So.
And the, doesn't the qualified mental health professional get paid or not paid as well?
That's correct. From the county where the patient comes from.
Yeah.
Yes.
So when those counties choose not to pay, everybody's working for free.
Correct.
Is there a time limit? If somebody goes to HSC and they're there for two months, do they then become a Yankton resident?
No.
Okay.
No, residency is based on where you came from prior to that, similar to like a nursing home.
That happens after they're released into the community for a while.
Yeah. So then they're here a month and then we pay for.
Correct.
Got it.
So, so when you bill these other counties, what's the hourly rate or what, what do we, what do we bill the other counties?
Whatever you tell me, I get to bill. Right now it's a hundred dollars. And thirty dollars for my board members.
So we, we bill, so if we have a person come, is it a hundred dollars an hour or what are we, what are we billing, say, the neighboring county to do uh, a mental health value?
Same price.
So we, we bill what their cost is?
I bill them.
You bill them.
I, let's say somebody comes from Charles Mix, I will bill them for my time and it, it's not an hour usually the hearing. And I will bill them for the board members' time. The, um, sheriff will bill, the Q M H P will bill. Everybody has to involve. Court reporter.
So, so irregardless, if, if we give you a raise to a hundred dollars an hour, you're.
That's what he has now.
Or, or one thirty.
No, one twenty.
What, whatever the magic number is. You're billing the other county for that.
Correct. I am.
But when it's Yankton County, you're also billing Yankton County that same fee.
I am. I have for years and the, the prior one has also.
Pretty much you have to.
And, and I, I understand that. So I, I guess.
Can we get a better rate? Is that possible?
Well, you have already for seven years.
Wanda, you're, you're in, you know, you know more about this whole project than, than I do and I, I think that you do a whale of a job and whatever it takes to make sure that the right things happen, I think that's what we need to do. So.
I would move that we increase the board chair and alternate chair to a hundred and twenty dollars an hour and that the uh, the board members, which are, um, obviously the chair is a board member, but the all, the other people um, that we go to forty dollars an hour.
I'll second that.
I have a motion and a second.
May I ask a question and I'm not trying to be greedy. Will it increase, include a cost of increase or do I need to come back periodically?
You might have to come back periodically. That would make more sense to me because court-appointed fees are set by somebody other than.
Right.
Attorneys.
You want that to start right away?
January one, January one.
You want me to add that to the motion?
Whatever.
We can add it.
And then Lucy, we do.
Oh, we're, we're.
In July, if you could come back then when we're budgeting, that'd be, probably be.
The board meets on Tuesdays and Friday mornings unless there's a Monday holiday, in which case then it meets on Wednesday. Um, and occasionally things like Christmas, New Year's, those things, Veterans Day fall on Monday, which makes the board scramble a little bit. So if you want me to renew that motion, I will revise it or do you want me to withdraw my first motion? So we're.
amend your first motion.
I'll amend my first motion to make it do, uh, effective one-one of twenty-five so that we can keep it in the budget.
I'll second.
So I have a motion and a second, motion by Wanda, second by Ryan to approve the uh, one-twenty for the directors and forty dollars for the board members. Uh, effective one-one twenty-two-five. Any further discussion?
Yeah, I think it was chair and was it vice chair?
Chair and alternate chair, I believe they call them.
Yep.
Okay. All in favor? Aye.
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 Uh, opposed? Nay. Motion carries.
And, and thank you to you and your board for the work you do.
I appreciate that. So, and you asked me if I could come back at the time. I'm not sure how.
Yeah, if she was going to come back, I, I think the best time would do, would, would be budgeting time.
Would, June or July when we start the horrible process.
When we're, when we're doing budgets.
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a nice evening.
You too.
You too.
Moving on, medical cannabis renewals.
How many do we have? She needs to turn her thing on.
And what do we charge for renewal?
Five thousand dollars non-refundable fee. For each one. So if somebody's getting a grow and dispensary, five thousand for each one of those and it's not refundable. Uh, when we decided that years ago, it was a lower amount, but it was not refundable because, uh, we, that's just the way we decided it, so.
How many?
Do we do these as a group or individually?
Kind of, um, you can do that total.
And there's how many of them? Eight.
I'm sorry?
There's eight.
Okay. Yeah.
Forty, forty thousand for the county.
That'll pay for the mental illness increase.
Yeah, maybe, maybe not.
At this time, I guess I would ask for a motion to approve the renewals for the
I would move.
Medical cannabis renewals.
I would move to approve the medical marijuana or medical cannabis uh, renewals as a group. I like doing them one at a time, but.
I'll name them.
That's fine. You want me to name them?
Of a motion.
I don't think we need to. We don't do it for the liquor ones that way, so.
But I think we should.
I'll second the motion.
A motion by Wanda, second by Dan to approve the medical cannabis renewals licenses for twenty-twenty-five.
I have some discussion.
For their discussion.
Is anybody checking up on the mirrored group of requirements that each one of those have said that they would do?
The state is supposed to do that.
But we could task Mr. Cressy to do it because he has lots of available time, I understand.
From, from what I understand with, with Deb and, and Rob is, is the state was supposed to take care of that and do all of that or because if we're going to have to do that, then we probably should increase the fee too.
Do we have any awareness that they've done it yet in the last, what, year and a half?
I don't know. I don't think, I would believe that if they, if they being the state came out and did an inspection and there was some failure, that they would pass that information on to the sheriff's office and the sheriff's office and his deputies would swoop in and do what they do the majority of the time.
All right. What's your official question so I can try to answer it?
Is, I think Don's official question was, have you?
Requirements. Each of these, when we, when we approved them originally. I'm asking if anybody follows up on whether the people are doing those requirements. One of the ones that I, I, I'd think about was, uh, they indicated that they would be checked up on on the exact, uh, measurement of every dose that they said. So that's all I'm asking. Does anybody check on that?
So, um, currently the state is supposed to be monitoring any and all stuff regarding the marijuana. Um, every seed is supposed to have its own individual number, so they have their own tracking. Um, my office has never been notified by the state. Um, I've had some business owners invite the sheriff's office to kind of see their facility to see, you know, because we might have burglaries or something, you know, so they wanted some insight on the sheriff's office on where they should put security cameras, things like that, but to my knowledge, the, the office has not been contacted at all. The state's supposed to regulate all of it. I know the state's attorney's office is also not involved in this. It's kind of the state's baby and, uh, we have not been notified at all.
Do, who would I ask, uh, to be the person that would go from here to the state to find out if they've done anything?
I would probably start with the attorney general's office.
I think you could call the, uh, folks up in Pier and they will tell you the, the ones that are. And I could probably get you a phone number if you want.
And, and my office can certainly check in too, just see how we can help.
I'd just like to know, they, they promised to do multiple things to be perfect and, uh.
I'm surprised they haven't handed it back to the counties, frankly.
Yeah, I'm sure it will happen at some point.
Okay, to answer your question, Don, we, we don't check on that. That's the state level. The counties aren't. That's not in our purview to do. When we approve the renewals, they still have to get a renewal from the state. And so our renewal only says they've met our requirements and they're, they're good, they've paid their fees, their taxes, things like that. So if there's any violation, the state won't issue them their actual license and so then they can't sell. So the state regulates all of that. And if they don't comply, then the state just doesn't issue them a license for the new year.
I'd like to remember.
Okay.
Deb, is that the Department of Health that does that? So it's the Department of Health that regulates that?
And just like with, um, alcohol or tobacco compliance checks. And just like with um alcohol or tobacco compliance checks, the state doesn't do anything with that. The federal government will do some uh compliance checks for like alcohol and tobacco. I know the state's attorney's office and my office and the city of Yankton or the police department are looking at doing. Compliance checks for alcohol and tobacco.
They have been doing compliance.
Yeah, inside the city, yeah. So. But for the medical marijuana. That's a different story, state.
We can find some people to go in and try and buy. That shouldn't be very hard.
We're getting some volunteers here, I think. Alright, thank, thank you.
Had a motion and a second.
Okay, I got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, aye? Opposed, nay? Motion carries. Uh, Yankton Library.
Good evening, commissioners. Um, first of all, uh, your agenda says Dana Schmidt is gonna be here tonight, but. My name is Linda Joe Brevoli. I'm the assistant director at the library representing Dana tonight. If it's okay with you, I have a document that I'd like to share.
Sure.
So I do want to thank you very much for your time tonight and thank you also for your support of the library. It is exciting times at Yankton Community Library and I want to let you know that that is due to our. Creative energetic staff. They are so outstanding and they make a lot of really hard things look really easy. They get all the credit for everything. Uh, the brochure that I just handed to you, I would invite you to take a look at that front page there. Where it says books are just the beginning. That's what we operate by every day. Um, though we do indeed deliver books, about eleven thousand of them every month. In a variety of formats, including digital. So we're not, the books are not going away anytime soon. But I would then invite you to open up and look at the top of page three. Where it talks about all the other things that we're doing over at the library. And it does say that we are checking out Lego kits and NASA backpacks. Museum passes, light therapy lamps and all kinds of AV equipment. And now I need to add to that list that we're checking out toy bins. We're checking out passes to the state parks. This, the last couple of years, we've been able to offer day passes to the Summit Center and to the Huthar Family Aquatic Center. And brand new this year, we are checking out laptops and hotspots.
And what was the second thing?
Hotspots to provide, to provide internet service.
Linda, what is a NASA pack? What is that? Sounds interesting.
It is neat. It, it is a backpack that comes with a my, a telescope, not a microscope. A telescope and all kinds of activities for sky viewing.
Interesting. Very proud of our library. I think it does wonderful things for our community.
Thank you very much. Um, I also included a calendar in there for you just to draw some attention. To the programming that is currently happening at the library. By the end of this year, we will offer five hundred programs that over ten thousand people will attend. So. You take a look, there are very few days when something, if not more than one thing, is going on at the library. Um, as we speak right now, there's a group over at the library making holiday cards. And we also have staff also hosting a Lego event out at the Mead Museum tonight.
Linda, one question, and I know I brought it up before and you're, you're not the decision maker, but. I've always kind of felt that it wasn't necessarily right that people who live outside the municipality uh. Had to pay. I know originally years ago, the county's donation went toward. People living outside of the municipality then could get a free library card. And then the county had to do some cuts and so they instituted the, the twenty dollar out of pocket. But now that we're back up to the twenty thousand dollars, could that go away? Because we're where we were before they instituted the twenty dollar out of pocket.
Sure.
And, you know, I guess I've, I've never felt quite good about that because the citizens who live. Out in the other communities and then the rural areas, when they do come in, they do pay sales tax. I don't, just think.
Well, if you look at the statistics from the library of, of the cardholders. And you look at the county cardholders versus the city cardholders, you know, the county. We, I, I feel like residents of the county are still getting a vast benefit of what we put into the library at twenty thousand. Compared to what their budget is. I mean, we contribute very little to their budget at twenty thousand dollars. And uh, you know, we, we have cardholder, we have cards to the library. Um, my kids go there, they go to some of these programs. They love them. Um, and twenty dollars a year is.
For a family.
For a family. It's nothing for everything that you get out of it.
You know, it was before though, and, and I know this is before your time, it was available. The county's donation of that amount was to offset that. You know, we went down for a while, we're back up there and, and the twenty dollar charge was still there. The twenty dollar charge was because the county. Uh, gave less money. And now that we're back up there, it maybe it's something we could revisit.
I think that's something that's open on both sides, isn't it? Uh, you know, I think the test that library did after twenty-five thousand, we only gave them twenty thousand this year. Um, and so we still have not given them like a full amount and so. Um, I, I think it's definitely something that both boards are open.
I also asked when, when they were here for the, for the budget process, I asked if we gave them twenty-five thousand. If they would get rid of the twenty dollar fee for the county residents and I was, I think we were basically told no. So I don't have a problem if. If we were to bump up the donation to the library for our county constituents. If the county constituents didn't have to buy a library card for twenty dollars.
Well, but that's twenty dollars a family and if it's, what were there, eight hundred families that? So we're talking sixteen hundred dollars? In exchange for five thousand seems like a poor math problem to me. But I have a question which is not related to that. I can check out fifty books at one time.
Indeed you can, yes. You have to carry them yourself though. We don't carry them out for you.
Do people actually check out fifty books at a time?
There are a few people that actually do that. Likely they're homeschooling individuals. There are some that, that do. And I do very much appreciate your comment, your input and your discussion. Like you started off by saying, Dan, I'm not the decision maker.
Yeah, I get that. I understand that.
There, there are three entities involved and I think during budgeting time is maybe the time for that discussion. Um, I, we do currently have nine hundred and seven county cardholders. That makes about sixteen percent of our total.
Mister Chair, I'd move approval of the library agreement.
Second.
I have a motion by Dan, second by Ryan to approve the library agreement and any further discussion?
I'd just like to say thank you for you and your team. You guys do a great job for the community and.
Thank you. Thank you all.
All in favor, aye? Opposed, nay? Motion carries. This time we got a state's attorney Tyler.
Thank you. Uh, my name is Tyler Larson, current deputy state's attorney for Yankton County State's Attorney's Office. Um, I'm here tonight, uh, not requesting anything, but more of a show of appreciation for one of our. Outgoing elected officials. And so as many are aware, we did have an election a couple of weeks ago. However, one person did not seek reelection and that person has been a. Elected official in Yankton County for the last twenty years. Uh, at the end of the current calendar year, this individual would have served. Five consecutive four-year terms as state's attorney. Uh, that individual, Rob Clemish, um, is here tonight. Uh, Rob has been an integral part of the Yankton County State's Attorney's Office and Yankton County as a whole. Uh, throughout Rob's twenty years as state's attorney, he has overs, he's overseen. Uh, many implementations of new programs, uh, that the state's attorney's office has implemented. Both in the office and in the court system. Because Rob's tenure goes back twenty years, I haven't been there that long, so I did have to reach out to some other individuals to get some more information regarding. Uh, regarding Rob's achievements. Um, I talked to uh Brian Hunoff, who's a very. Uh, good advocate and uh very knowledgeable when it comes to Yankton politics. Uh, John Billings with the state's attorney's office who retired uh from, from a full-time position back in two thousand twenty. Also provided some information. So I do thank Brian and John Billings uh for some assistance in my research. Uh, during Rob's tenure, uh, like I said, many programs have been implemented. Uh, most uh recently in the Yankton County State's Attorney's Office, we have started a diversion program. Uh, we have brought on a diversion coordinator and that person is in charge of juvenile and young adult diversion programming. Uh, with the state's attorney's office. We work in conjunction with uh the schools district and uh Boys and Girls Club. It started out as a JDIA program that the county authorized. And under that, Rob has oversaw or overseen many successful diversions that not only benefit. Those in the program, but the county as a whole. Uh, Rob was also in office uh at the implementation of the Yankton County DUI and Drug Court Program. That program was initiated back in two thousand thirteen. That program has seen many successful um. Graduates that go on to lead sober and rewarding lives after their time. At the state's, uh, at the DUI and Drug Court Programming. Uh, during Rob's tenure as well, working with juveniles, Rob has been the juvenile. Uh, prosecutor for many years. Uh, he has worked closely with programs in Yankton such as the River City. Domestic Center, Casa I know is a program that Rob worked with uh to implement in the juvenile justice. Uh, setting. Rob has also created a great working environment. Uh, the working relationships between the Yankton County State's Attorney's Office. And local law enforcement, including the Yankton County Sheriff and the Yankton County Police Department or the City of Yankton Police Department. Has also tremendously increased under Rob's supervision. Not only has he implemented many programs, he's also provided many uh legal opinions and. Uh, works closely with the offices of the Yankton County Government Center and other county agencies. Uh, Rob has been personally a person who uh I take great pride in working with. If it wasn't for Rob, I wouldn't be where I am right now and I would not be able to uh succeed Rob in his position. And so I'd like to thank uh Rob Clemish for his twenty years of service to the Yankton County. Residents, the county itself and the Yankton County State's Attorney's Office. So we do have a resolution that will be read by Ms. Howie Fox. Uh, Rob, if you'd step forward, please.
It's long. Over there. Somebody wants to take a picture.
I think we all need to take a picture.
Well, but they're handing off the torch from one to another. Hand it to him, shake.
Should get a picture with the commission with you and Rob.
Go ahead and read the resolution.
Okay, this resolution of appreciation for Robert W. Rob Clemish. This resolution recognizes the service of Yankton County State's Attorney, Robert William Clemish. Whereas Robert W. Rob Clemish began his service as Yankton County State's Attorney on January one, twenty. Two thousand five and whereas Rob Clemish is a lifelong county resident who graduated from Yankton High School in nineteen eighty-six. And the University of South Dakota in nineteen ninety. And whereas Rob Clemish graduated from Creighton University with his Juris Doctorate in nineteen ninety-six. And whereas Rob Clemish is a member in good standing of the State Bar of South Dakota, State Bar of Nebraska. South Dakota States Attorneys Association and the National District Attorneys Association. And whereas Rob Clemish has been involved in several Yankton youth sports organizations in a variety of leadership roles. And whereas Rob Clemish was elected by Yankton County voters to represent their best interests. As state's attorney in the general elections of two thousand four, two thousand eight, twenty twelve, twenty sixteen. And twenty twenty. And whereas Rob Clemish chose not to seek reelection this year and concludes his service as Yankton. County State's Attorney on December thirty-one, twenty twenty-four. And whereas Rob Clemish is a loyal public servant who performed his duties as state's attorney in a congenial. Helpful, positive and professional manner. And whereas Rob Clemish has devoted twenty years of his life to serving as Yankton County State's Attorney. And whereas the Yankton County Commission wishes to thank and formally recognize Rob Clemish for his two decades of. Dedicated service to Yankton County. Now therefore be it resolved by the Board of Commissioners that we honor Robert W. Rob Clemish on twenty years. As Yankton County State's Attorney and express our gratitude and appreciation for Rob's faithful service to Yankton County. And extend to him our best wishes for a long, happy and rewarding future. John R. Marquardt, Chairman, Yankton County Board of Commissioners, signed, John R. Marquardt on November nineteen, twenty twenty-four.
You want to say anything?
Say a little something, not really too much. Thing was, uh, Brian Hunoff called me. Long ago, so twenty-two years ago or twenty-one years ago, Brian called me. And my parents were away. They won this award where they um got to go to Africa where you like buy one, get one free kind of thing. So I don't know if it was a win anything. So I call him down there and they said we discussed it when we got home and then we decided to run. And then when we ran, you do all the typical political things which are a little uncomfortable. So you're in the parades and you do your donuts and your cookies and all that kind of stuff. So my wife is here on the time and thank God we didn't have to run again because I don't think she enjoyed going and throwing candy at little kids. But my kids were little at the time. Now it's been a long time, so they. Wish I would have continued running or we had to ran and been in the parade a little more, more often. It's amazing how fast time goes. It, it's amazing. Um, I could say I lost my hair in the state's attorney, but I didn't. It was gone before I started. It did turn gray though. It, it turned gray and the sweaters got a little tighter. So it's about the only thing. But thanks, I did enjoy being the state's attorney. It's kind of weird to be done as the state's attorney. Um. I really enjoyed it. Yankton County is a wonderful county. Um, we, we've lived here our life. We wouldn't do any, we wouldn't live any other place besides Yankton. So we really enjoyed it. So thanks for the honor, greatly appreciated. I found out today coming in this building. And it says in there, there's gonna be a thing for me and I'm like, oh my gosh, that's gonna be on tonight. So I called Deb Lilly. And say, Deb, what's this? And she claimed she's in a meeting, so I figured nothing out at the time. So it's a little embarrassing, but thank you. And to my staff, this isn't overtime. Thank you.
Just wanted to add two things real quick. We ran out of time when we were researching Rob's career. But I'm pretty sure when he won his first election in two thousand four, he set the all-time Yankton County record for most votes in a general election. I couldn't do enough research to guarantee that, but I'm. I couldn't do enough research to guarantee that, but I'm pretty sure that's the fact. And I'm pretty sure his twenty years of service is also a record in that office. So thank you, Rob.
Okay, second reading of our floodplain ordinance. Bill, fill it in for me.
Just wait up. I'll do that for.
So this, good evening. This is the second reading of the recommendation to adopt Yankton County Floodplain Prevention Ordinance and proposed maps, which will replace the Yankton County Ordinance number seven, twenty-ten dash one, ordinance twenty-four ZN zero-eight.
Chair, you want to open it up to public family?
At this time, we'll we'll have public comment on this second reading of the floodplain ordinance that is um we're looking at adopting this evening. Are there any public comments at this time? Seeing none?
I'd like to say something on this, Mr. Chair.
We'll bring it back to.
Yeah, I just feel this is a huge overreach again by our federal government. Uh, we have no choice. This is being jammed down our throat. We're being told we have to adopt this. Uh, and now FEMA, they won't even provide us a complete map of what the new floodplain area. Instead, they provide us with three hundred really tiny uh maps that we're supposed to piece together and just adopt. And if we don't adopt it, then we lose floodplain insurance and access to FEMA and and all kinds of stuff. And uh, there's a lot of properties in the county that are going to be affected and uh, when we adopt this, I I know what's going to happen. People are going to want to do something and they're going to get blame us, but we don't have a choice but to adopt this. And it's a huge overreach by our federal government.
Any further discussion? Kind of agree with with Dan, not necessarily, however, but uh if we do not adopt this, it's going to mean that that Yankton County will not be eligible for for flood insurance. So so it's kind of one of those deals that uh we want to make sure that all of our constituents have the opportunity to cover themselves and and take advantage of that. So.
Oh, I how I feel, you know, FEMA spending a lot of money on flooding throughout the country. So what they're doing is increasing the the floodplain insurance maps to areas that didn't flood in twenty nineteen and probably will never flood. So those people pay for New Orleans and all the communities on the coast that flood all the time. And uh, again, it's going to be a wake-up call when somebody goes to build a garage or machine shed out on their farm and they realize they have to hire an engineer for ten or twenty thousand dollars to do a permit for it. And it's nothing we want, but it's eye-opening and it's being jammed down our throat and we have no choice um in the matter. And it's a bad deal.
I agree. Write that down.
Yep. And the worst part is they wouldn't even provide us a a complete map. They they had a map and then they took it down. So.
But however, at this time, we need to, I would ask for a motion to approve the ordinance.
And if, Mr. Chair, if we do approve it, it will not become valid until February fourteenth.
The FEMA has to finish their formal adoption. So we're adopting it now as part of our ordinance. It won't take effect till February fourteenth of twenty twenty-five.
So if he wants to build, they need to build between now and February fourteenth.
Don't. Um, get your permits before.
According to FEMA, we have their proposed maps. That's considered best available information. And we're required to go by them. And it's been that way for two or three years. We we've got it. We've got to go by it.
But what if we can't tell from the three hundred little maps they have?
If it's close, we just go with the worst-case scenario because if we don't, even though they tell Yankton County, you're the ones that make the decision, they can come back and say, we don't like it, tear it down. So we're erring to the side of caution.
So so I have a motion at the at present time by Don. Can I get a second?
I'll second it.
Second by Ryan. Further discussion?
I I didn't make the motion to approve it because I like it.
Yeah.
But I think it's the best option that's in front of us and if we don't do something, we're gonna
Yep.
we're going to be way farther in trouble.
Yep. Another another unfunded mandate by the federal government and now we have to manage a floodplain ordinance for them and with your property tax dollars and we didn't get another penny out of it. So got more work to do. More rules to follow uh with the same amount of property tax.
So that we lost some development.
Yeah, and we lost huge parts of development throughout the county that can never be developed now. And uh.
We have a motion and a second. And all in favor, aye?
Aye.
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 Opposed, nay?
Nay.
Motion carries. Thanks, Bill, for you.
Thank you.
What you done with this? This time we got a second reading on the Kleinschmidt rezone.
Advocate, excuse me, applicant is requesting to rezone a parcel in rural transitional district to a moderate-density rural residential district per Article eighteen, Section eighteen oh nine, and Article twenty, Section two thousand three. Said property is legally described as Lot One of List acreage in the east half of the southwest quarter of Section Four, lying south of the public highway and the east half of the northwest quarter of Section Nine, All in Township ninety-three North, Range fifty-six West of the fifth PM, Yankton County, South Dakota.
At this time, I'd ask for a public comment on this this rezone. Seeing none?
Mr. Chair, I make a motion to approve the rezone request.
Second.
I have a motion by Dan, second by Wanda, to approve the sec- the rezone request by uh Mr. Kleinschmidt. Further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Motion carries. Okay, we're going to move on to uh Block Platt.
It's up there. Yep, you got it. Oh, we can enlarge.
That's that's. Five step plat.
Minute.
Move a move approval.
Second.
A motion by Dan, second by Don, um to approve the the plat for Mr. Block. Uh, further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Motion carries. Mr. Combiessman's plat.
Move approval.
Got a motion by Dan. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Wanda. Further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Motion carries. Authorization authorization to approve uh advertise a gravel bid by Mike Slatchek, our Highway Superintendent.
Just looking for approval to go out to bid for gravel. West of eighty-one, south of forty-six.
Move approval. Second.
Motion by Wanda, second by Dan, to approve the authorization to advertise for gravel bid. Uh, further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Motion carries.
Mike, you want to just give us a quick update of the things you're working on and um, sure, guys are getting ready for winter.
Right now, uh, finishing up mowing road ditches, uh oils, county gravels, townships, um. Few culver projects still going on, um. Just odds and ends, catch-up stuff throughs uh
Yep.
a list of stuff that uh we accumulate throughout the year. So now it's time to work on it. So.
I've heard good things. I think the roads look pretty good. Just thank you to you and your team for all the work they do and get ready for winter. I guess they'll probably have a few late late evenings and early mornings. So.
Yeah, we got everything uh not totally mounted up, but she's ready to go. We can be ready in about four hours. So.
And you said you got the new cat payloader in that you got?
Yeah.
Good doing.
Loader. Um, the berm that you guys approved, we won't see that until later in the year yet, but.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Mike.
Juvenile detention discussion. Preston.
Thank you for having me again.
Welcome.
Yeah, welcome. So uh, just a brief uh discussion. Um, this is I took over as the sheriff of Yankton County. The chairman, Mr. Marquardt and I have kind of started spearheading a little bit about ways that we could be more efficient in Yankton County. Um, and obviously the juvenile detention uh is been an issue, I would say, just for the taxpayer. And the reason why I bring that up is just that um Sioux Falls has got kind of a monopoly, so we have to pay what they what they ask us to pay. And so just to kind of give you a brief overview, um, I had Cassie in the others' office pull some um budget detail from twenty thirteen to twenty twenty-three. Just to kind of give a overview of how much we've spent since twenty thirteen. Um, just estimated cost twenty thirteen for juvenile detention holds uh was thirty thousand eight hundred dollars.
And that that twenty thirteen would went would have been when the state was still doing juvenile, correct?
Yeah.
Okay.
Uh, twenty.
And what?
Uh, it was approximately thirty thousand eight hundred. Twenty fourteen was about nineteen thousand three hundred. Uh, twenty fifteen, uh, looks like a combination. It'd be about sixteen thousand. Twenty sixteen was approximately thirty-six thousand. Uh, twenty seventeen was approximately forty-four thousand. Twenty eighteen was about forty-two thousand. Twenty nineteen, for some reason, wasn't added in there, so I don't think get with Cassian. Get that one.
What year was that?
Uh, twenty nineteen is missing. Uh, twenty twenty, this is where you start to see the jump was two hundred and one thousand. Uh, also for some reason I have twenty twenty-one in there. Twenty twenty-two, um, it bumped back down about ninety-five thousand. And twenty twenty-three, it jumped to a hundred and seventy-nine thousand. Now, I know why the one in um see here, twenty twenty was two hundred and one thousand. We had an individual that sat up there for almost, oh, I mean, the whole year uh for a heinous crime. So but uh.
Sure, sure. Would you explain what goes into that, those uh, those those numbers? Uh, what what is that composed of besides?
No, that's ju- that's just what we pay.
Yeah, that's just what we're paying.
JDC to keep our people. It doesn't include.
I understand that, but the real cost is transportation back and forth, legal costs back and forth.
Yep, yeah. And we actually do get reimbursed for from the Department of Corrections. So the the transporters keep track of their mileage and their time on some of that.
And the legal fees are not included in there, but it's not considered a juvenile cost.
Yeah. Um, currently.
I don't make the rules.
Why in the wouldn't they be?
Yeah, so currently.
I don't make the rules. I just play with them.
So currently, uh.
Where's make those rules?
October of uh twenty twenty-four, we are currently at two hundred and forty-six thousand eight hundred and eighty-four dollars is what we're paying this year.
Still have a family of three up there?
I don't believe so. Um.
How long were they up there?
Uh, I don't, I don't know, but um.
Majority of the year.
So we so we pay four hundred and fifty-eight dollars currently a night for the juvenile detention center. Uh, I believe that is going up to four hundred and ninety-eight dollars um at the first of the year. So you don't see anything going down. Obviously, you guys are commissioners. You see a lot of people come in here and say there's another, you know, price hike. So the only reason why I bring that to your guys' attention is just because I I think that um, working with the state of South Dakota, um, the Department of Corrections, they have a compliance uh with administrative policies, the procedures for custody of juveniles in South Dakota. So this this little booklet right here is the current manual that you have to abide by for South Dakota. There's about twenty-seven pages. And when I took over the office, we were just trying to think outside the box. How can we save the taxpayers' money, but also how do we not take our juveniles away from their home? Because a lot of times you see a kid um get sent to JDC. Um, and then what happens? They meet other kids that aren't from this area up in Sioux Falls or wherever. So we kind of introduce our kids to other kids that may be going through some bad times. Um. So uh, the jail administrator, myself, uh, we took a tour of the Cottonton County Jail. Uh, if you've ever been up there, we have a much better jail. I will tell you that right now. Um, but they have a, it's called a co-locate.
A what?
A co-location um onto their jail where juveniles are able to be monitored, attached to the building, but it cannot be sight or sound.
With adults.
With, uh, yeah, so the adults have to be separated. And you can actually monitor with your current staff. Obviously, we'd have to boost their staff up a little bit, but if you were to ever look at building a juvenile detention center off-site, the stipulations with the Department of Corrections, you're you're going to have to boost up your your staff. So we're just been working together about how we could possibly make things better um for the county in the long run. And exploring the addition of maybe adding on to the side of the jail, uh, making it co-located, um, would allow our current staff, maybe add one extra staff member on at all time because up in Sioux Falls, I think at the most, Yankton County's had four juveniles at one time up with JDC. So if you had an addition, we'd be able just to add one more staff member and they'd be able to monitor the juveniles onsite in Yankton. And there's no separation from, obviously, from the family, but maybe for the nights, the juvenile needs to know that there's rules, you have to follow the rules. Um, and then they can go back to the family maybe the next day or because it seems like we go to JDC, we pay them the five hundred bucks and then we pick them up uh the next night.
Isn't it true that normally only the worst of the worst go up there?
Not necessarily. Um. Sometimes you just have kids that just keep reoffending, uh, even on the juvenile detention alternative initiative program that the State's Attorney's Office is currently working with. Um, there's maybe some kids that could have been sent to JDC a little sooner. Um, but it helps alleviate.
Do we have um GPS monitoring bracelets for these young naughty children?
Yes, there are some options there, but.
Uh, Sheriff, if, I mean, basically, if if the judge orders them to go there, we have no choice. We have to send them there. Is that? Is that the process?
Yeah.
If the judge says that you are going to Sioux Falls.
Well, judge sends them to JDC. That's where they're going.
Yeah, so and so we don't have any say. We just, we don't have a say, but we got to pay.
No, but I mean, but the presiding judge does try to
Yeah.
use other alternatives before she sends them.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And some you just can't fix.
And a lot of them are just reoffenders. And so and the big thing is like, um, instead of introducing these children to other kids that are problems in another area. Um, you know.
With better ideas.
Yeah, smarter ideas. But then they start sharing uh Snapchat names or they become friends on Facebook or Instagram. And then, hey, what do you do this weekend? I'm out of JDC. Let's hang out. And then I don't see anything positive happening. So.
When we went up there, there was, when we went up there, there was one one kid in there that was very, very young. I want to say eight or nine years old.
Geez.
And he's in there with sixteen and seventeen-year-old kids.
Yeah, so they um.
Zero chance of changing them.
Yeah. And you can't criminally charge any any individual unless they're ten years or older. So um, if they're younger than that, that's when they have behavioral issues and they go to Oviedo and the county still probably pays that.
So really quickly, it's like, you're just kind of mentioning like, okay, there's there's some kids that may have gone sooner, maybe, maybe possibly even if we had our.
We had something maybe on onsite, we could maybe prevent them from, you know, causing more.
Do you think if we had our own on-sites? Do you think if we had our own onsite place, would the judge be more apt or slightly more apt to send them into detention?
I, I actually, honestly, I think the judges are less likely to send them to Sioux Falls because they know how much it costs the county to do the five hundred dollars a night. I think if we had it onsite, the additional cost is already there. Um, and then we'd have the staff to be able to monitor, on, you know, monitor that, that child for the night.
I don't think one night is enough to give them a good enough taste.
Yeah, yeah, so I think that there's a lot of times where, uh, a crime is committed in a juvenile, sometimes a report gets sent over to the state's attorney's office, or they go to JDC for the night and then they have a hearing right away in the next morning. Or maybe if we had something onsite, they can sit in the facility for a week and then have a hearing, you know, the next week or whatnots. Um, we've talked to the school districts. Um, in today's day and age, there's online schooling that's more prevalent for kids today than there ever was. So it actually allows the student, if it's a Yankton student, Gayville student, they can still do their online homework at a facility, so.
I guess, I guess one question there is like, you're just saying like, uh, most you have is four right now, do you think that capacity might have to be a little more in this case now, because you might have a a few more peaks?
Yeah, so I think, uh, Yankton County should strategically go into it focusing only on Yankton County.
Mm-hmm.
If there's room available and we were able to branch out to surrounding counties like we do now for the jail, uh, the founding fathers, when they did the, uh, the jail, um, addition, you know, twenty-some years ago, that has set Yankton County up for success because we're allowed to take other, um, counties.
Federal.
Yeah, and the federals, the federal ones, but obviously, we wouldn't, we wouldn't hold any federal inmates for juveniles, but.
Uh, do we have a, like, the average daily number of juveniles we have? Cause I, I guess I, it, it's making sense to do a lot of this, but it's so sporadic. I mean, we, we have people and then we don't have people, and is, is there like an average daily number that we have?
Um, I mean, it could average from up to four, but we're all, we are always at least housing one, I know that, I mean-
Do we have one right now?
Yes.
Yeah, and I guess-
Because of, of those four, three of them were from the same family.
Yeah, and I guess what I, what I'm saying is if, if we had some ability to make this modular and when it's not being used for juveniles, if we could maybe house somebody else in there.
More federal prisoners.
What we don't want is we don't want it sitting open and unused the majority of the time.
The plan, the plan is to have, to build a two, two-story structure.
Hmm.
The top floor will connect to one of the, one of the jail pods, so that we would actually be able to house another eight adults in the second floor. And, and house up to eight juveniles in the, in the lower section. I think, I think if Alec, if Alec who was here earlier would have stuck around, I think he would have given us a number that, that said, I think we averaged two and a half juveniles throughout this year so far, per day.
I think that they should stay at least long enough to eat regular jail food, that might turn some of them bad.
Obviously, we want them to make sure that, that they get the, they get the, the just of being a criminal and they don't want to do it again. That's, that's our obviously objective, but just as Preston said, if, if we have the facility here in Yankton, we have the, the school, Yankton School District will provide them with the education that they're used to getting here at the Yankton School System. And if they're going to Sioux Falls, who knows what, uh, curriculum they're using at that point in time. They come back, even if it's a ten-day stay, uh, twenty-day stay, they come back to Yankton, go back to the school system, and they don't know what they've, what they're, what they're studying or learning, so therefore-
Some of those children are in the alternative school.
Yeah.
Which means they just do it online.
Right, but they're still doing Yankton, whatever Yankton School District is providing to them.
Uh, Mr. Chair, you just asking to, we want to go ahead and like, look at, dig in deeper and look at costs and stuff, is that kind of what?
And I could fill more on that too, so.
Okay.
Now, for, uh, State's Attorney would pay the overtime for Alec to be here, he could have came up here and gave us some-
Calling back.
Calling back, in on the OT, so.
At, at this time, it's, it's just further discussion that, that we're, we're looking at.
Yes, and so with the, um, currently at the Safety Center, there's an agreement between the City of Yankton and the County of Yankton. The land is owned by the city, the building is owned by the county. On a ninety-nine-year agreements, um, the city pays X amount of dollars, um, a month to the county. And once this ninety-nine-year agreement is over, they either have to renegotiate something, obviously, it's probably gonna be past my time. But I'm just trying to think ahead of how can we even, so, yeah. So, what we have done is we've had some meetings with the city already, um, they're not official meetings, but there's just discussions about what we can do, um, to help not only the taxpayer, but also the, the juvenile too, and the families. So, I reached out to, uh, Sheriff Powell over in, um, uh, Clay County, cause they're building a new facility. I don't plan on a forty-four million dollar juvenile facility like what they have. Um, so the consulting group is Tegra is the company, uh, the individual name is Dick Strasburg is who I've been speaking with. Uh, he's come to one of the meetings and showed what we need to start looking at, if it's something that we were um, looking at building at some point. Um, and as, um, Chair Markort had said, we would look at maybe an addition on top of it, just to expand the space, you're already gonna be, if you were to construct something, you might as well plan ahead and expand the jail and you can still have additional room for adults.
Would, would, would it be additional room for an adult, but could also be converted into additional for juveniles in the future? Just have that flexibility, would it, be something like that, or?
I think the bottom floor would be the juvenile detention, because no sight, no sound, and where, the place that we're looking at would make it an easy access point for the kids to have, uh, their rec time, cause we have the big gym.
Okay.
Um, and then above would be the, um, an expansion onto the APod, which would just give us more, um, room for adults. Now, twenty years from now, um, juveniles need to have their own detention center, like we need to make a facility offsite. That bottom portion can just be an expansion to the, the jail for adults, and then you can relook at building a whole separate building.
Okay.
Um, so with Tegra, um, they're willing to do a lot of the hoop jumping to see what we all at all need to make sure that we're in compliance with certain laws, um. And, um, I think the total cost would be about forty-five thousand dollars to have them have an architect come in, show you the building, it's about a ninety-day process. Um, they would compile all the statistics that would say this would make sense or not make sense. Um, I, I know it's a, a leap for forty-five thousand, but in the long term of things, is it something that Yankton County should consider? I think so, because I just read you year to year to year what the juvenile detention center costs are. Um, and those kids aren't being held year-round. And if we had one like we did in twenty twenty, that was obviously, like I said, a different type of crime. Um, you could be looking at some major, some major costs ahead of you.
So what are they gonna do? Uh, how's the county gonna get around the fact that the city owns the land?
I think, uh-
I'm sure the city wants something for that land.
I'll let Chair Markort talk that.
So I, I, I did, I have approached the city about purchasing the property underneath of the, the, the Safety Center. Uh, there was a little bit misunderstanding from what they thought I was looking at or what we were looking at. Um, so I just reiterated, uh, to them, and they're gonna look back at it. The, the proposal that I made to them was to, right now, the city is paying Yankton County ten thousand dollars a month for the rental space that they use in the Safety Center. I proposed to them to purchase the three lots that are, that the, the Safety Center is sitting on, plus the parking lot to the east. And I proposed to them to work out an appraisal cost of that property, and we would allow them free rent for whatever it takes to pay that appraisal price off.
And where are all those cars gonna park?
Uh, they're still gonna park where they park it now, so we would-
In there if we build a building.
So the addition, so the addition portion- Gonna take up that parking lot, but-
Yeah.
It just works out that part of that lot is part of the-
Where the current transport vans are sitting, there's like four parking spots there, the addition would come out to there, could come out a little further, that's what the architects would have to even look at. We might not even be able to build there because of, there's utilities maybe underneath there, but we don't know if we don't know, and so.
I guess I, Sheriff, I'd feel better if we had kind of a go-ahead with the city and, 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 uh, and a, like a motion, uh, or authorization from them, because I'd hate to spend money and then the city's like-
And that's exactly what I told the city, that, that unless we have
Hmm.
Uh, uh, um, purchase agreement or some sort of an agreement, that we would own that property one way or another, that we're probably not gonna proceed much further, but I, I think that they will kind of agree with what we want to do.
Yeah.
To purchase the property and then move forward, because I explained to them also, it's gonna save the city some money also, in the fact that their officers, when they arrest these juveniles, pick them up at the school, if they're creating issues there. Um, their police officers don't have to sit and babysit them for four hours until something can happen, what, you know, depending on the crime that they're committing, so, so, uh, I, I think they will understand if, uh, what we're trying to do also.
Uh, Sheriff, do you have an idea how many additional employees, like, this addition would require?
I think, well, currently, um, I think if we just added one extra full-time staff member on at all times, that would allow us that, that extra supervision for the juvenile detention.
Okay, and then when, say that's empty, then they could be in another area?
Yeah, well, I mean, we're, we're always short corrections, so I mean, you could always have them do something else.
Sure, sure, okay.
So, uh, but if you build a completely different site for a juvenile detention center, let's say, ten years from now, you know, you guys aren't here and somebody else is there and they say, well, what the heck? Why are we paying forty-four million dollars for an eighteen-bed juvenile detention center? Then they can say, well, if you're still, still here, they can come ask you, I don't know, but.
So at this point, I, we're not, we're not reg, uh, saying that we need to spend the forty-five thousand dollars.
No.
Uh, until we get a, a final word from the city, so.
Like I said, I just, I provided the numbers just to show you since twenty thirteen, all the way to twenty twenty-four. Like I said, we're right now, we're at two hundred and forty-six thousand eight hundred dollars, and we're not even done with the year yet. Um, there was a small couple months, I think, where we were doing pretty good, and then now we're getting back up again, so.
Of course, uh, of course, I think if we do get a consultant to do the study, I think we want, or we approve it, we'd wanna see like kind of the outline of everything and the definition of what they're working on and what they're going to provide and everything, so.
Yeah, and they have a ninety, ninety-day plan where they would show you exactly, and
Yep.
Um, the one that they gave me was-
I sent it to Gary today, but it's obviously out, so we was gonna put it up on the screen, but.
They kind of showed us like, if it started yesterday, what the ninety-day process would look like and stuff, so.
I'd, I'd, I'd like to see it as a, as a priority, that we put some, uh, pressure on that. I, I, I think I've heard a figure from Sioux Falls, when they get their new detention center built, that number may be closer to eight or nine hundred bucks a day.
I wouldn't be surprised in the next couple of years, and that's why I'm coming before you guys now as the ninth largest county in the state of South Dakota. We were ahead of our time over jail, obviously, this, it would be a co-locating, it's not a separate facility of juvenile detention, but it's a place where we're able to take the juveniles to a safe place for the night, um, and they have that, you know, oh, there's some consequences here, instead of sitting in the police department interview room for four hours waiting for a parent to come pick them up. And so I think this is just a something to indulge in and see what we can come up with as a, uh, as a, you know, department leaders. And, um, so that's why I brought it up, and there's a couple soft savings of what we had talked about a little bit was uh, the ability to continue local education path that doesn't derail the academic track. So yes, when kids get out of school suspended, you know, they're out of school suspended for ten days, well, what are they doing? They're not at the juvenile detention center, um, maybe they're at home. So what are they doing for the ten days at home? At least at the juvenile detention center, they have a place where they can stay on track. Uh, mental and physical well-being, um, you know, there's always concerns with the juveniles at that age. Um, ability to have access to local diversion coordinators and the attorneys, so, um, being in the same building at the state's attorney's office, Alec with the JDAI would still be able to work with these kids uh, and have a place to meet with them safely. Um, and then the ability to coordinate it with various, uh, various local programs for support for the juvenile, you know, obviously with Lewis and Clark Behavioral being here, they would have easy access to some extra resources, and besides Lewis and Clark, I mean, there's other places here in town that would be able to help the juvenile.
No, Mr. Chair, I got, uh, something I found interesting in the P and D from, uh, two, uh, nineteen, uh, twenty-four, so a hundred years ago. It said a fifteen-year-old Yankton County boy was sent to the State Reform School after he failed to live up to expectations by County Judge JD Boils. He was mentally alert and a student in the eighth grade, but could not keep his promise. And so he was sent to Plankington, and just for you guys at home, uh, so you realize there was a solution to this, as the state had a school for this, and in twenty sixteen, under Senate Bill seventy-three, they the state again dumped an unfunded mandate on all the counties, instead of having one solution where it was a state uh, facility for juveniles, they said, you know what'd be a lot better? Let's have sixty-six different solutions and no more money, and pushed it off, um, onto the counties, and we're supposed to do, uh, more work with the same amount of funding, and if you wonder where your tax dollars go and why we gotta cut things, it's unfunded mandates just like this.
And so that's, that's why we're just bringing it up today, cause somebody's gonna deal with it in ten years from now, and-
Yeah, and it'll probably be seven, eight hundred, could be a million dollars in ten years, what we're, what we're dealing with, we-
So maybe something to consider, that I, I did budget three hundred and sixty-nine thousand for juvenile detention holds this year. If for whatever reason we, you know, are below budget, which I hope we would be, if there's money left over in that, it was already budgeted, maybe you can allocate that money to this, you know, cause we're only about, yeah, to the study.
Yeah.
So something to consider, hopefully we are under budget, um, on that, but it's really hard to essentially double the budget when you take office, because they keep raising the rates.
Yeah.
So.
Thank you, Sheriff.
Yes, thank you. On, on a side topic, um, the Sheriff's Office is gonna join the ICAC team, which is the Internet Crimes Against Children. And so, um, what I need, uh, there's no commission approval on this either, but I just want you to be aware that, um, um, the Division of Criminal Investigations have their own ICAC team also. And at the local level, the Sheriff's Office is gonna start participating in, um, monitoring people who are looking at child porn or anything of that nature, and so, um, we can get up to maybe twenty cases locally a year in Yankton. And so, um, our deputy that would be assigned to it, uh, would be Sergeant Greg Jensen. He would, uh, investigate those crimes and help assist, uh, the DCI, so, um, no commission approval, but I just, I need to have the chair sign off on it too, but we just wanted to make everybody aware that we're gonna join the ICAC team as well, just to help, um, you know, save our children, so.
Before you leave, I wanna thank you for the, uh, advertisements that you put on the radio, I think that's very meaningful and, uh, it, uh, I, I hope it sinks into people about drunken driving and
Oh, yeah.
Driving when intoxicated and-
Yeah.
Texting and driving.
Texting and driving too, yeah, just-
It's, it's put out in such a nice manner, it's not threatening, it's not badgering, it's-
Just telling them the truth. Who's got a better voice though, Chief Foot or I? Put you in a tough spot.
Yeah.
No, I appreciate it, thank you though.
You know my, my license plate number?
No, no.
Nobody can look it up pretty quick.
Yeah. No, so if you guys have any questions, always reach out to me at the Sheriff's Office, I mean, I'm more than happy to answer any questions, um, not even at the commission meeting, so.
Oh, we appreciate them too and everything they do, so.
You bet. No, I wouldn't be able to do what I'm doing without the employees, so thank you.
Yeah, thanks, Preston. Next up, we're running a little bit, uh, a little bit behind, but, uh, four H building discussion. I guess we I see I see several people here, um, this evening, uh, from the four H board. Yes. For a long time. Okay. Okay. You betcha.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you for the welcoming, uh. Commissioners, um, Ryan Schwach, I'm the attorney for the Yankton County Four H Nonprofit Organization. As the chair noted, there are quite a number of, uh, Yankton County Four H leaders, um, in the room today. Um, and I just want to start on their behalf by thanking you. Um, as current commissioners and also all the past commissioners, um. For what's really been a strong support of the Yankton County Four H program over many, many, many years. And, um, I want to thank, um, the the few of you that I have talked with about this issue for your cordial and frank conversations about. Kind of how that future support looks, um, and particularly how we address the extension office, um. And want to thank you too for also providing, um, a county employee to help with the four H program. Which I think, um, in talking with other board members in other counties has really. Um, been integral to Yankton having, um, one of, if not the best program. Um, for four H, um, in this area of the state, um. The, the, the leadership, um, has, we've had these conversations, they've been difficult, and I know. Um, you guys are thinking about changing the way that support looks, and I'll be frank with you, their preference would be that the status quo remain. Uh, status quo is working really, really well for them. Now, having said that, um, recognize that that's not necessarily, um, how things are going to be, and there's a discussion about. The building, um, and what that looks like. Um, and as you've been advised by your attorney, that deed had, um, some unique language in it that should it no longer be an extension office, it's to come back. Uh, to the, uh, four H group. So what I wanted to discuss tonight, um, for your guys' consideration and kind of our issues, knowing that that support. Is important to you, um, that support of four H is important to you. Is that we develop some sort of what I've been kind of calling a landing strip. So that this handoff of the building, if that's what you choose to do, is successful for four H. Um, and the reason why we need that bit of a landing strip is because. You know, there's no budget for this in our side, side of things. It's it's been in the county's budget. Um, but it is not in the four H budget, and there's gonna have to be some work done on their part. In order to make their takeover of this building potentially, uh, successful. And so that's something for your guys' thought and consideration, um. I was kind of, uh, talking with the president of the leaders. Uh, a six month type landing strip would be be really great and really helpful to make sure that this transition is a success, uh, for everybody. Um, secondly, um, we understand that that county employee may no longer be in the building. And if if the building does come back to four H and it's no longer an extension office building. I I know they would want me to say that she's always welcome in the building, um, to to work, um, you know, on whatever she may be working on. Um, but for clarity, um, if she's not in the building. Um, one of the things we would appreciate knowing is if your intent is that employee would have no more. Job duties or obligations, um, to provide that four H programming. Um, we certainly would like that to continue, um, in some capacity, even though she may not be in the building all the time. Um, we think that it certainly could be that she could continue in that role in some capacity and of course. Use the building, um. That's really important for us, one, for that to continue at least through this landing strip period. Um, but two, um, that is really essential for us to know to to figure out how programming is gonna look at four H for the next year. And and so those are kind of the two big issues that we're trying to seek clarity on. Is the status of that employee in terms of programming, um, during the landing strip period and after, should you choose to do that? And then also just trying to discuss how does that landing strip look? Um, where there's a period of time where, um, everybody knows that that building, um, is coming to the, coming to the four H. Um, nonprofit because of the way the deed is written, um, but there's a way for it to be successful. So I will, um. If you guys have any questions for for me on behalf of my client, I'm happy to try and answer them. Um, I'm also happy to continue working on this with, uh. Your current state's attorney and your new state's attorney, um, uh, outside of this meeting too.
Any questions for Ryan from from the board? I guess, I guess I I do have a comment and. I appreciate you coming and I appreciate the four H board showing up here and everything. We we did start this discussion, I think approximately six months ago. And the, the situation that is in hand. Um, I just feel that the the county owning or. Owning the building or not owning the building is is irregardless for the, for for what we want to get accomplished. I've been on, I I grew up as a four H member. I I'm not any in any way. Saying that we're not, we don't want to support four H because I think that, I think that we all do want to support four H. However, the decision that we have to make is kind of important. That we have a building that we basically are not mandated to to have an extension office as a county, uh, representatives. And we have a building that we're paying expenses for that that we have no authority to utilize on our, for for the county business. So therefore, that's what basically. Brought this to a head and. Um. We 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 have other avenues that we could utilize the building for. Along with the extension service and the four H. And obviously, we haven't been able to come up with a solution to cohabitate in that building, so. So therefore, I think it's our decision that 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 we. Need to re-return the building to the four H board. Now, how that transition takes place, um, we're still open for discussion. But at the same token, um, there's a, there's a county employee that we don't feel that. That having a single employee in a facility outside of our control. The the liability there is is not something that we want to want to look like, and we've discussed that. Therefore, we're we're not saying that we don't, you know. Katie is the employee is is still considered a county employee, and we will continue to employ her in our facility. So that's kind of our take on on how to move forward. If if you want to work with. With Rob and come up with with any other solutions and present them to the to us. Um, I I don't feel that we have another six months for the landing strip. If you want to do three months. I think we can agree to to working with that if if that's okay with the rest of the commission. Um, but like I said, we started this discussion six months ago and never got any place with it. So, um, that's, that's my thoughts and and we can move on from there. Um, I do, I I do think that we've all got the the train of thought that we. Don't want to continue to own the building.
Mm hmm.
So. Uh, any other discussion from the commission? Any other thoughts or ideas from what I just stated?
It's, in my opinion, it's just an unfortunate situation that. The county and four H can not work together.
Yeah, I I I mean, we are where we, we are where we are on this issue and, um, it's. I can assure you, I I am talking with my clients and it's on their side, it's been done in good faith, and I think it's been done in in good faith on your hand, on your side too. Um, I really mean that, and sometimes that's just how it works.
Yes. Certainly.
My name is Michelle Nielsen, um, and I am one of the leaders of four H, um. I I remember a discussion that we had. In our office and we did help try to suggest other offices come in with us, um. I do know that the contact center did not want to come out to that building. They have told us that or they've told Katie that. So it it made it sound like it was all us who decided that we didn't want them out there. It was not all us. They also said to us that they did not want to come out there, that that our building was not big enough for them. Now, whether they said that to you or not, I don't know, but they have told us that.
Do you know who told you that?
I I don't know who told, I don't know who the people are. But that is what had been, um, conveyed to Katie.
Because the contact center is only. It's going to get whatever room we give them in that place that.
Right.
But the way we had thought that we would reimagine it would have worked for them.
That was, that's what they conveyed to us, is that they did not want to come out there. So it wasn't a hundred percent us that, you know, said that.
You know, we're not saying that it's a hundred percent.
I I'm. But but that's.
Saying that whether it's the contact center or some other entity that we we. We have no control over the facility to utilize. To be the betterment for the the county and the constituents of of Yankton County.
And and our, and our aspect as leaders and county leaders. When we have four H, a- and maybe a lot of people don't understand the program of four H. Four H is family. We don't just take our kids and drop them off at achievement days, drop them off at meetings. We have the parents there also. It is family. Most of the things that they do is not just mom and dad. It is grandparents that are involved, aunts and uncles that are involved, um. You have some of that with sports, but it just is the one game. You don't have the parents that it it, we're not babysitters. We don't just take the kids to practice, drop them off and come back and get them two or three hours later. Four H is family. The families are there with their children. They're communicating between one another. They know how to speak. They know how to do projects. They know how to be humans. And and. Because of programs like four H, we are not having to worry about a youth center to put children in. And four H. Maybe dying. But we are trying our best to keep it going, and Katie is going into high school or into schools to educate some of the younger kids also. And she is doing a wonderful program as far as farm safety and. A- all the safety camps and whatever that she is trying to do and to have the facility where she is at, where everything is right there. For her to. The extension building is right next, or the, um, four H building is right next door, and she has everything right there at hand. And now she has to be running halfway across town to. And hauling everything from one place to the other for her to have, um, do her job. It will take more of her time. To do, to do her job. And a lot of, you know, she does a lot of evenings and, um, Saturday work because. Kids are in school during the day, so we do things on evenings and Saturdays.
Man, would you have a suggestion? Because I think one of the concerns we had is just a, a single, one. Employee there, like you said, nights, weekends.
And I get that.
Days is is to me, it's. You know, an issue of safety. Unfortunately, uh, it's the world we live in today and, uh. What what would your suggestion be for for that? I mean, I. I I know a couple of years ago, we used to have, uh, three people there.
Right.
And the state of South Dakota four H came and stood and sat right there and told us that they're cutting, um, Mrs. Holland Beck. And if we ever needed or were short staffed, he promised us that we, they would come back. How many promised us over and over again, and now that person is gone. It was what, Mr. Perry? I believe in talking to, uh, um. Percy. Yeah, Katie is, he's gone now, and so. You know, we kind of feel like the state has failed, and we are not the only county. They cut Bennett County and I think three other counties. And so I guess what's the solution to just, you know, one person by themselves. At night county employee. I'm I'm taking it from a safety perspective. What what should we do?
So when we're talking about this right now, and it's something came to my mind that I was just thinking about at this moment, um. What if we split and share the building? Part of the building that you you rent from us for Katie? And then we are allowed to rent out whatever offices, like the other three or four offices that we get income from.
I guess I don't understand.
Well, there's like four offices there, you know, in that, in that building.
From from what I've heard, the Department of A, they don't pay us anything, do they? Have you ever gotten a check?
Seventy five dollars a month.
That's not gonna go too far.
No, I'm just saying, but if you, so like if you rent a, uh, and I, this is just something that's coming off the top of my head, whether it's. Capable or not, I don't know. You rent enough space for Katie to have her office, you know, to work her office, and then. We're allowed to rent the other half of the building out. And and.
Does that fall within the? It has to be used as an extension office if you're renting it out? Or is.
I guess I would assume, this is just an assumption on my part. That as long as there's an extension office, an office in that building. That we can do whatever we need to do with that building. I get that. If there's a, if there's an office there that's strictly for the extension.
But doesn't that kind of shoot down though that we rent four other offices out to somebody else? If it has to be the primary purpose?
I don't know, but I guess in my mind, if we have an extension office, an office in that facility for an extension agent. Employee, then I guess in my mind, we should be able to rent the rest of the building out for. Whatever, but I I think, I think we're, we're, we're. I think we're beyond that point. And we're, we're not saying that Katie can't work out of our facility and do four H and extension work. The the only difference is gonna be is the location of her office. And. The county cannot assume liability for one employee to be off site working full time. Uh, that's just the way I see it.
I'm sorry, I'm Mary Fiedler. I'm also one of the leaders. For Yankton County, and I know several of you. To answer your question, I believe the Yankton County Commission has to contact the state. To ask for help. In the extension service.
When I talked to Katie when she came here, we we asked her about that and. The individual that promised us, from what I was told, uh.
I know longer. He's not there, but that doesn't mean someone's not in that position. It's just like. If you were gone, they'd find someone to take your place. I'm sure there's someone in that position to contact and ask for help. From the state extension service. That is my understanding. It had to come, the request had to come from you. Was what I understood. And I believe also at that meeting that you guys had. It was suggested maybe like the WIC program or some smaller offices in the county building. Come into that building, which would be working with youth just as we are and families just as we are. That maybe that's something that could be utilized in that building. I know that was a suggestion that you guys had made. I know at the last commission meeting, there was things like, you know, we can't have the auditor move in there. No, that's ridiculous thought. But the WIC program, community health nurses. Some smaller offices in this complex that could maybe move in to that building is what we had suggested too.
We we discontinued our, uh, the WIC and Nurse Health Office, so that's, we pulled our last. Well, we, it is a state office and we had to, uh, pull our employees.
And 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 the state pays us rent for the facility that they're in right now.
It it was, it's kind of similar to four H where the the state decided they weren't gonna support the the county, uh, nurses. The county nurses anymore, so we ended up pulling our employees and sending them to the. Ambulance and State's Attorney's Office, and they're now paying.
State of South Dakota pays for the WIC program to be in here and the home health nurses to be in here.
We don't have a home health nurse anymore. We have a.
They just rent the space.
It's a regional one.
People that you rent the space.
Yeah, they're all state employees, yes.
Chairman Mark Ward.
I think I I think the commission probably is in agreement to giving them a little more time, right, to not taking it away. That might just give us a little more time to talk through if there's other options with the understanding. That the commission today is considering giving the building back in a three-month period between now and the future. Maybe there's a resolution that comes out a little different than giving the the building back. So I'm probably saying. Maybe have the commission make a determination with that kind of being the theory, leaving it open a little bit for discussion. With the theory is we got a three-month window to kind of work through, and after three months, and if we didn't come to a resolution. Then the county's gonna be giving the building back if if we don't come to something else. Because we're kind of discussing maybe some different options that maybe we didn't think through that might change your decision. So I'm thinking instead of talking through them tonight, it's maybe we can have a commissioner to me with four H and think through some other options. With the belief that, again, three three months is the time and the county would be giving the building back if something else doesn't occur between now and then.
Open.
I guess uh. If you get it back, then you can do all the things that you talked about, rent it out, do other things with it.
I'm I'm.
You're in control. I I I'm.
Curious um what the expenses are that that you guys incur for the building itself. We've not seen any of those.
Do you know what we budgeted for four H last year? Was it, I want to say, was it a couple hundred thousand?
Well, we do, as I understand, we do snow removal.
Sure, sure.
Employees that are, there's only one now.
Yeah.
We do lawn care. Snow removal, lawn care, upkeep of the building, and I believe, I'm sorry.
Around the county building. They do the county building, snow removal and mowing. We do the four H grounds, snow removal.
Correct. And then we did, as I understand, I wasn't on the commission at that time, but it's my understanding that. Uh, we did some parking lot repair.
That was for the four, the big four H building that that we. Um, we brought our equipment and the paver and.
Paid the county for it.
Well, we, yeah, uh, we gave you a good deal. Um, and we brought our paver in, which we. We want to work with you and we have a good relationship, so we had our our employees do that. And I think that's, you know, just something we need to. Address as we all support four H. We we want to have a good relationship with you guys and we want to find a way to. Make this work.
We also have a space issue that we're having to resolve.
Yeah.
And we don't have an unlimited budget either.
Yeah, and the the biggest concern to me is employee safety in the day. We then and no other department has a single person there and, you know, what what happens? Medical emergency, things like that, what what happens? Yeah. I certainly wouldn't want. You know, one of my loved ones in that situation, and that's what I think started this, is we need to, we need to figure out that. That issue because it's it's important to me, and and I'm sure it's important to you too, in the safety of our people, so.
So is there no possibility of ever having a receptionist assist office manager in that building again, like with Danielle?
I.
I mean, is that just a?
I don't think we're replacing her. It just doesn't make sense for the amount of things that the extension office did. It was a lot more of the four H. Scheduling, if you will.
So our our operating expenses for the facility out there is budgeted at forty thousand nine hundred dollars.
And that's utilities, insurance.
Supplies.
Okay, forty thousand nine hundred.
What was it with employees and everything included? What was the whole budget for four H and the extension?
Thousand seven thirty-seven. Payroll was a hundred and thirty-two. That's for two people.
That would have been for two, and that's what Katie requested.
Yeah. Well, how do other, how do other four Hs do it? Do the, does the county just uh give a lump sum and then they? Manage employees and, okay.
Not sure.
Okay. You know, and maybe that would be an option too.
I don't, because we're, we are original or unique to most of them because the. The Leaders Association owns the property and we're, you know, on our on our own. Most of the other counties pay for all of that because it's all theirs. It's the county's. So, and that's why, you know, that's why it's so unique. And and we're probably like. One or two of the only counties in South Dakota that we own our property. You know, four H grounds and everything else. Other places, the fairgrounds is belongs to the county. And they have a fair board and they have, you know, it's the county that takes care of all their property and they pay for all of that.
Sure. So at at this time, I'd ask the commission to decide if we want to. Move this down to a three-month program or what what are, what's what's the commission's wishes?
I guess I don't have a problem with moving it down to three months, but we've already had six months of. Inability to reach any kind of an agreement.
I'd say we empower the chairman to, you know, negotiate and make a decision on this. He's he's been in.
Is that a motion?
I I.
Ryan, what do you got to say?
I I would like, I I, you know, I think uh. It'd be good to have another sit down to really talk these things through, because I, I don't know, I feel like there's a lot of information that's. We really have not processed here.
Do you want to, you want to sit with the chairman?
I would definitely volunteer to do that.
Well, why don't we?
And really.
Make a motion then to Ryan and Chairman sit down and negotiate and they can, they can make a decision. On on this, I guess I would be. Yeah.
And bring him back.
You know, what timeframe?
I'd say, I don't know, that's up to you. What do you want, Linda? You're, this is your department, so. I I guess.
I I had been hopeful that we could reach some kind of accommodation that. We could have extension out there, continue with the four H, but then move the contact center there, but. Um, I heard it during a meeting that uh essentially uh. The four H board did not want that kind of people in their buildings, so.
That has not been said by the four H board. If you want.
So so Ryan and I will sit down with Rob or Tyler and Ryan. And we'll do that within the next thirty days and see where we can, whether we can.
And I would be fine with with having just you guys make the decision on it personally, but.
They've given us some parameters. We haven't really given them. Parameters back on how what what we could settle on. I think that has to be.
What were you thinking, Dan?
I wouldn't go into negotiations uh unless I knew what the other side wa- wanted and what I wanted. So that we could come to the center point and 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 reach a conclusion that's with both parties.
And I think, I think.
We have all that information.
I think we can do that within the next thirty to forty-five days.
I I would say, yeah, give us two months because we do have holidays in here, so.
My my only concern is we still have one employee. Totally by themselves on weekends and holidays and at night, and I I really think that's a safety issue. It's been going on a long time. You know, what liability is the county, assuming we know it's a problem? And we just, we're continuing to let it go on night.
Is Katie gone? No, she's not gone until January.
February.
Okay.
She'll be gone for a couple months.
That's always been my, my thought is employee safety.
And so that's maybe something we also have to discuss then.
And maybe that's even at, even during discussion that we find her uh place here. In the meantime, I just, I I don't, I don't feel right. I certainly wouldn't want. The county to put one of my family members in that situation.
I know that was discussed at a previous meeting with commissioners, safety, and. It was suggested that passively some type of system, if that was really a concern. Some type of system could be put on where people would have to do just like they do at the high school buzz in. And she'd have to come and let them into the building. I know that she has the secondary doors locked now. The only one that you can get into is the main door in, the doorbell alarms, and she comes out of her office.
Let me ask, let me ask you that. If we postpone this for sixty days, like Ryan and I. Like right, like Ryan suggested, is there someone from the four H board that could sit in that, work in that office? For the sixty days that we're looking at now so that Katie's not alone in that building?
Let's see, are you paying that person?
Absolutely not.
Okay.
Absolutely.
That would work in that building.
Well. Be present in the building.
Present in the building and assist Katie with her four H needs.
For eight hours a day.
Whenever she's, whenever she's in the building.
We have to discuss. And get back to you. We have to discuss that as a board and get back.
Maybe there's an option where she can be closed for four hours and.
If she, if she's going to, if she's going to the the high school or the the grade school or whatever for two hours, whatever.
She does, yeah, when she's been at the high school or in one of the elementary schools, she.
And and that's just to protect the, that's just for, to protect the county from liability issues, certainly. Right here.
You're gonna have to step to the microphone because our at-home listeners can't hear.
Sorry. Um, I know there's times that Katie is gonna have night meetings, uh, and she's at the courthouse. Are you gonna protect her at night?
If if she's having meetings for four H groups, I would assume that she's gonna be in your building facility. With with the four H groups.
But if she, if she is located um at the courthouse and the kids come to the courthouse.
You mean the courthouse or this building?
Pardon me?
This building or the courthouse?
Well, if you move her to the courthouse.
No, we're there here. She'd be moved here. And those doors lock at night.
Wouldn't there be other people here? Like if there's, she's having a meeting, there's a group of of people, and so somebody'd have an emergency.
Well, she would have kids, like kids there.
Yeah, and I think that's the concern is is not, is is being alone with nobody else around. Possible a medical emergency or or we, who knows what? I don't think anybody's concerned about. Meetings with other other people.
If if she's meeting with four H clubs or groups, I would assume that they're still gonna be meeting at that facility. Is that a fair assumption, Ryan?
But that is.
Yes.
She's doing that now with the extension code.
There there isn't any difference than when we all leave here and the door locked, then Benny's the last one to leave.
Well, I think if everybody really wants to, we could work this out for everybody, so we all figure out what we want.
What was your name, ma'am?
Donna Schwartz.
Okay, just a a quick conversation. Thanks for everyone uh with this conversation and appreciate you all coming this evening. Uh, we'll figure out a way to work this out. Okay?
Do we need a motion or anything, or are you two just gonna come bring a suggestion back to us?
I think so. I don't think we need.
Okay, nope.
March first. February first, what, what's the date?
February. Sixty days, February first.
Yeah.
Okay, AAA collection discussion. Um, Dan and I have discussed uh. Or she was here at our last meeting to present, present presentation for collection. Um, do we want to make a motion to approve them AAA collection to? Work on our outstanding bills that we have.
I know the state's attorney, you already do some, don't you, Rob?
You, isn't it a thing where if you give it to them, they take them, and you don't have to give them anything, so there's no commitment to?
There's there's no commitment and they only charge the twenty-five percent if they collect the bill.
As long as they are not, we are not responsible for any expenses.
Correct.
No filing fees, no postage, no service, no nothing.
Put that in the motion.
What, so so here's, so here's what I would, I would like.
And and what bills are we talking about? If we're talking about indigent legal bills, good luck on that. Is your microphone on? Thank you. Still not on.
If we'd have collected that money, Wanda, we could have gotten a new.
There we go. It's on now.
There you go.
You had.
Like I said, we have state's attorney, medical, uh, the clinic, the hospital prescriptions, ambulance. Um. Uh, warrant fees, um.
And we're not collecting any of that right, right now.
Oh, well, the sheriff's collecting warrant fees.
And we have thousands, we have hundreds of thousands of dollars. That individual owes us that. I mean, there's some from the seventies and eighties.
That's gone.
Yes, yeah, we're not gonna get.
You can't collect anything of that.
It's a year that they they, the state did forgive. You know, up to a certain year. I can't remember, it was like seventy-three or seventy-six. You know, I don't think they haven't done it anymore.
So I would recommend that we. First of all, have Rob go through the contract, or your office, go through the contract with AAA. And upon the discretion of State's Attorney's Office, Brian and Patty would be, who would. Use their discretion to send the, those bills to AAA to collect.
And and I liked Wanda's addition that there are no additional fees such as postage and and and.
Service fees, filing fees.
And I think that's gonna be in the State's Attorney's Office to go through the contract that we're gonna have to sign, so.
And I would suggest it be for one year at a time.
If we're talking about a hundred dollar bills, wasting your time.
Mm-hmm.
Well.
Five hundred dollar bills, you're wasting your your time. It's, you aren't gonna hire somebody to do it and make any money on it. I did that for twenty years, so I know what it costs to collect bills.
You got any comments, Brian?
No. Uh, I guess, you know, Patty, you you deal with this probably the most. I I think there there is value in. Try, at least trying to collect some some bills, and if we only have to pay twenty-five percent. Of what they collect, I guess I don't, I don't see it. I I I understand what you're saying totally. Uh, but I think it might be worth a try.
We did have another collection agency do that for us and. It, they didn't get us, at first they did, but I mean, after a while, it was just.
Yeah.
It was no use to having it, because it never.
It doesn't work. You can't, you can't do it for, uh, on these small bills.
And that's, that's why the state doesn't even use collection agencies. They created the the Obligation Recovery Center.
Well, that recovery center, though, what they do. What the recovery center does is adds a twenty percent fee on top of, it's a hundred dollar bill. Then within ninety days, it's a hundred and twenty dollar bill.
I give them a try for one year.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. With what she, with with what you said.
Yeah, I think it's worth a try for one year.
No.
Okay.
I move approval of uh.
But don't expect much.
Yeah, move a, move approval with the contingency that there are no additional fees. And that the state's attorney and and the auditor review, and then the chairman can sign the agreement.
For a one-year term.
One-year term.
Second.
Okay, got a motion by Dan, second by Don, to approve the, for one year, the AAA collection. Agencies uh contract. I would like to have Rob's office read that contract, go over it, just to make sure, so. Before we sign it and.
Ambulance already uses the same service.
How's that going?
Well, I mean, he's collecting money. I mean, he really actually is, so.
I thought that's where our people that were collecting the money.
Our people are doing the billing.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Okay, I have a motion, a second. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Motion carries. Health insurance. Brian, you got something to say? Yeah, you know, the last, uh, well, I don't think I've ever come to a commission meeting and tried to weigh in on the health insurance, but this year I decided to. Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, uh, Brian Hunoff from the Register of Deeds Office. I just want to share a few thoughts from at least one department head perspective about these health insurance proposals from Avera and Wellmark.
Now, first and foremost, looking at the numbers, cost of Avera's proposal is considerably lower. And would result by my calculations in a hundred and eighty thousand annual savings for taxpayers. That's savings for our county government as a whole, savings for our department budgets. And if you agree with a suggestion I'm gonna make in a minute, savings for two-thirds of our employees. So right now approximately seventy-five employees get county health insurance. Uh, twenty-three don't have any kind of a payroll deduction because they chose a higher deductible, so they don't get any kind of a paycheck deduction. Thirty-nine of those are paying fifty-nine dollars per month out of their paychecks and ten are paying fifty-two dollars per month. This all totals up to employee contributions of thirty-three thousand, eight hundred and fifty-two per year. Now, it occurs to me that with the Avera, one hundred and eighty thousand in savings, you could take away that thirty-three thousand, eight hundred and fifty-two of employee deductions and you still have a savings of a hundred and forty-six thousand. And by the way, the budget dollar savings will be even greater because the county spent nine hundred and forty-eight thousand this year. And they budgeted a six percent increase for twenty-twenty-five. So our budget next year for health insurance is actually a million and five thousand dollars. The Avera proposal will charge us seven hundred and sixty-six thousand next year, so we'll see an actual twenty-twenty-five budget savings of two hundred and thirty-eight thousand. Now, in my department alone, the twenty-twenty-five budget savings would be nine thousand. You take larger departments like highway, sheriff, jail and ambulance, those savings are gonna be much, much larger. And I, I would like to point out also the importance of, Avera indicated that they would not increase in twenty-twenty-six by more than eight percent. That's another thing very helpful to those of us preparing budgets because, you know, we've seen years when the increase was twenty or thirty percent and that's kinda devastating. But the Avera, the Avera increase, excuse me, the Avera decrease from current, our current rate would be nineteen percent. We budgeted for a six percent increase, so that's a twenty-five percent swing that would really be nice for our budget to have that kind of a room. The Avera proposal offers free Planet Heart screenings and free Great Life Fitness memberships to employees. That's a fifty-five dollar monthly value. Now, that's a benefit not all employees are gonna use. They're not gonna choose to use it, some aren't, but those who do will be healthier for it. And that will result, should result in even better work performance and fewer health insurance claims for those individuals. Uh, and also we hear about the importance of shopping local. I think that should apply to healthcare as well. Avera is our hometown hospital, our main local healthcare provider and, and our largest employer in Yankton County. And I think we as county government should lead by example and support them as much as possible. City of Yankton switched to Avera Health Insurance a few years ago. Employees I spoke to in the city are, are pleased with it. The city actually has a nine-person employee committee that, uh, reviews all the options for health insurance for the city and then they make recommendations to the, to the city manager and city commission. I've talked to members of that committee and, and they are happy with Avera from both the care and cost standpoint. So I've, I've voiced a few different thoughts, but I think the most important argument was my first, which is. County taxpayers expect us to save money where we can, get the best possible bang for their buck. Avera's proposal with a hundred and eighty thousand in savings is clearly the best from that standpoint. Thank you.
Thanks, Brian. Anyone else wish to speak at this time?
You mean in the crowd? Did those guys wanna speak further?
Yep, yep.
It's not a hearing, but.
Meeting's almost half over.
Good evening, Sonya with RISD Benefits. Uh, thank you for your time this evening. Um, you guys have been given, uh, ample, um, information on both Avera and Wellmark and, uh, based on the cost savings, we are recommending Avera. We do have a representative with Avera, uh, Julia with us as well. Um, and, uh, the information provided. Um, from Avera is what we would bring you as well and just wanna reiterate that both Avera and Wellmark would recommend, even though, um, you can go direct the value of bringing a broker to the table to help provide, um, additional comparisons to look at every year to assist with negotiations. Um, and the value adds and education of employees. Um, so we are able to bring that along with, uh, the Avera, uh, insurance as a carrier as well as out-of-the-box ideas and options, which we presented the last time with the MRP, which would bring additional savings, uh, for the buy-down. Uh, and this is just the beginning of, as we get to partner with Yankton County. Uh, I hope to bring more, um, concepts and ideas and cost savings, uh, throughout the following renewal seasons. And as well as educate you as the importance of also, um, looking at ancillary benefits tied to your, uh, medical plan. And I did wanna kind of run through those briefly tonight. Um, your dental and your vision, it's not just a dental and a vision benefit. Uh, it's been a proven medical fact that people that have better oral health have less claims against medical, which helps minimize your renewals, uh, each year as well. And so that's the value that we can bring in the education and how to tie other benefits, um, that bring more. Um, uh, of a, uh, combined, uh, efforts to help with your medical as well and keep employees healthy, uh, and coming to work. Uh, so I'm gonna jump into that really quick if you, if you don't mind.
The dental you're talking about or which one do you want?
Uh, yep, so we're gonna start with just the dental really quick. Um, based on our information provided, you currently do have Delta Dental of South Dakota. Uh, Delta is a great carrier. There are other options available out there. Am I standing too close? Uh, there are other carriers and what we do as a broker is we go out and we get at least twelve quotes from other carriers and we bring the best at the table based on your wants and needs. And so we did, with limited information, bring, uh, a carrier called Reliance Matrix. They do provide dental insurance. Uh, we matched benefits with that and, um, you can see that there is, uh, savings for the employees, forty-two percent less than current. Uh, so that is an option available for you. Um, that is, uh, something that the employees might, uh, appreciate in regards to the costs, um, that come out of their paycheck in regards to those premiums. So, and our understanding is that is a voluntary benefit at this time. Is that correct?
Okay. All those vision and dental and.
Sure. And any questions on the dental? I don't wanna take up too much time, but.
How much is the yearly cost for that?
Uh, so it's gonna be based on enrollment and then that's gonna fluctuate. Uh, so I don't have the current invoice with me that shows how many are enrolled.
Just, just quickly, the, the forty-two percent savings by moving to the Reliance Matrix, that is based off the similar rate. And if your employers are paying that cost themselves, it's a substantial savings to the employees on a monthly basis.
So, uh, Reliance Matrix uses Emeritus, which is a national, uh, and well-known network, so. Moving on to the vision, again, that's a voluntary benefit. Right now, our understanding is Yankton County does provide two plans, uh, one with Optilegra and one with VSP. Uh, my understanding is you are direct with VSP. It actually is more cost-effective to go through, uh, carriers such as Reliance Matrix. We, again, we went out to quote for multiple ones, which is what we'll do for you every year to make sure that we can bring you competitive information. The annual exam's gonna save employees ten dollars, um, as well as the cost for materials and eyeglasses. The allowance is a hundred and eighty dollars towards frames each year. And, uh, you can see there's significant savings, uh, by over, uh, like half your, it's eight sixty-seven for the same, uh, actually better plan than the current VSP being offered to your, uh, current employees. Uh, Optilegra is a little bit more expensive. I'm not for sure based on the information provided, um, the reasoning for two plans. Uh, unless Optilegra is contracted, the most, uh, thing they're renowned, renowned, known for is contracting with, uh, LASIK. Uh, optometrist, you know, optometrist and be able to provide that benefit and a discount on insurance. So, but, uh, they are a plan that you guys have and we could keep that in place as well, but offer a, a better rate on the VSP plan. Um, if that's something that the employees had wanted.
I have a question. Um, the Yankton County, under the, I can't say that name, starts with an O. Get all the way down to the bottom and the rates, platinum, gold and silver. It appears that platinum is the least expensive. And silver is the most expensive. Isn't that reverse order?
Yeah, that is reverse order.
Okay. Uh, opt, yeah, so clerical error on that part. Optilegra does op, uh, provide the option of three-plan designs, which is, you know, gives you something more than other carriers, uh, provide in regards to that. But yes, thank you for the correction on that. So, any questions on the vision? Okay, um, what we did not, we always like to bring life to the, to the table. Not every, um, uh, employer offers basic life insurance. That is something we did not have information, uh, but did go out to quote for Yankton County. Does Yankton County offer life insurance at this time for the employees?
Yes.
Okay, um, so we do recommend twenty-five thousand or more. Um, funerals these days are, you know, fifteen to twenty thousand. It's even just for something really basic, so.
Just quickly, Dan was, uh, ran a cemetery and he can give you some insight as to costs to put somebody in the ground.
I worked for the, uh, diocese in St. Paul, St. Michael, that's how I met you, St. Paul, driven there for ten years. It's huge, my terminology, but fifteen isn't gonna get you in the ground. It's just gonna be blocked. We've lost, you know, we've all been there. My mother-in-law died this, this year. She's a hundred and twenty-three quarter. Her funeral was eighteen thousand dollars. I already had a marker for my father-in-law. So, uh, we've had numerous clients throughout the state, where they've had ten thousand. They're being, you know, ten dollars a month for that. We're coming in with twenty-five thousand, with ten thousand, they're not gonna get any. So we recommend mailing with twenty-five, sometimes fifty, and the rates are pretty, pretty decent.
A lot of the counties are moving up to fifty thousand. Um, so we, we've had a lot of that, uh, throughout the last couple of years, so I don't know what you guys offer.
And just so I'm clear, the annual premium for a fifty thousand dollar basic life and accidental death and dismemberment. Uh, is eleven thousand, is nine hundred and forty-nine dollars and forty cents for all of Yankton County employees?
The ninety-four employees, that's.
Yeah, it's very.
It's monthly, nine, nine.
I get that, but I mean, that's not. For each one, for the group.
Correct, correct. The, the rates are based on, um, the, the employee count. Um, so you're paying about ten dollars and ten cents per employee. Uh, employer-paid basic life insurance is very, uh, cost-effective, so.
Somebody forgot to turn their phone off.
So we did provide, uh, two options, uh, for your review, um, and that's something that.
Available.
You can take into consideration.
So all of the. Accessorial that, that we're talking about, all of the employees choose to take this on their own and we don't provide any of this.
That would, that would be correct, um, uh, except for the employer-paid life insurance, so the twenty-five or the fifty thousand dollar benefit. And then we would also bring to the table voluntary life. I'm not for sure if you offer that. Again, that'd be, uh, something that the employees would choose, uh, to participate in at their own cost and all is payroll deducted. Um, and then, um, one of the benefits of voluntary life insurance through a group, if you, if you don't have that, is, uh, upon initial implementation, uh, they do have a guaranteed issue amount that they could take advantage of regardless of health conditions. And so without, uh, having to, um, worry about, uh, uh, answering any health questions, they can take advantage of that. And spouses is twenty-five thousand and, uh, employee would be a hundred thousand. This is also available for new hires. Uh, so, um, a new hire would be able to jump on a hundred thousand regardless of health conditions within his waiting period, um, on voluntary life insurance. And that's a great benefit to have through your employer. Um, door knockers aren't there anymore offering life insurance and most people don't think or take the time to go out and, and look for that. Um, and it's a nice extra benefit to get, um, payroll deducted through work, so.
So you would just make yourselves available?
Correct.
At no cost to the county.
Correct.
Okay, yeah, if I can jump in quick, I'm going to jump back to the medical plan. Uh, I wanna hire your ROD because, well, you know, you know my wife, I believe. Yeah, my, my wife was a Register of Deeds up in Minnehaha County for, for twenty years. Uh, but, uh, he's, he's hired, by the way, uh, he's saying everything we were gonna say. We brought Julia along. Julia is the employee, uh, employer, excuse me, paying out direct with Avera. Uh, I, I wanna remind everybody that by utilizing that MRP concept that we brought to you, it will provide an additional, uh, ten percent savings or roughly ten percent savings on top of going direct. Now, our numbers on our medical program, uh, the buy-down pro, plan, the plan the employees will have are the same rates as if you went direct with Avera. So, uh, whether you, you buy it direct from Avera or you go through RISD benefits and everything else we can bring, the pricing to the employee is gonna be the same.
Is cost of the county the same too?
That's what's that last, that's.
Last, last going with you?
Yeah.
Well, geez. Yeah, can't beat that. And, and then your customer service, uh, one of our employees, look, you know, they need help. Did they call you? Are you able to come down and do training like?
So, yeah, so our process is, is we come down, we schedule enrollment meetings and we make sure we bring, uh, documentation and educate all the employees on how their benefits work. Cause you're not gonna use them if you don't understand how they work. And, uh, so we do that every year and then we're available to come down, uh, any point in time if, if there's a group of new hires. Uh, everyone has our cell numbers. I have employees text, email, call me after five o'clock. And if I'm available, I do get back to them. And so that is something we strive for is that customer service. Uh, I, you know, people don't like calling one eight hundred numbers. And especially if they don't understand what they need to be asking, so it's faster to call our office, cause we know what to ask and how to speed up that process to get that answer of that claim, um, corrected with the insurance company.
How many? How many county? Okay, so employee just has to pick up the phone and if they need, and call and if they need additional, you know, emergency weekend, you're gonna have somebody available to them.
They would have the broker's cell phone number and then we have a designated customer service representative from our office for your group, so they're not talking to five different people.
And you guys come down and do employee training and all that.
Yeah, so Hughes County, um, gonna be there, uh, at seven in the morning and then at seven o'clock night for the shift change, uh, so.
And how, how many counties do you guys?
We handle over two-thirds of the counties across the state.
So many, roughly forty.
Yeah, correct.
Okay, we, and you know, certainly appreciate you guys always being at convention and, and everything as well and, you know, supporting the counties.
Julia, is there anything you wanna add?
You've gotta come up to the microphone.
Yeah. On our rate cap for next year and if you guys have any questions, um, we're glad to assist the RISD team and, um, employee training meetings as well.
So we'll go over, uh, again with me, uh, what happens if I'm in Tampa and I have to go?
So you'll use our United Healthcare Network down in Tampa, anywhere outside of Avera's service area.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
And just a reminder with the, the partnership with United Health and Avera now, mail is in, uh, in-network.
It is.
Isn't it true that if somebody has a special condition? That Avera's policy is if Avera has a specialist, you have to use Avera specialist, not the person that you've gone to for the last five years, for example, that may be in Omaha.
Well, they could go down to Omaha, cause that would be in our United Healthcare Network. So I think what you're referring to is if it's inside.
So I think what you're referring to is if it's inside the network and there's that specialist, we prefer them to go to Avera. If it's outside, they can go down to Omaha, Minneapolis, wherever it may be.
Well, just so I'm clear, when you say when it's inside the network, meaning what?
So our network is all of South Dakota, a little bit of northern Nebraska and then northwest Iowa.
So if I've got, um, an employee, say, that's been treating in Omaha for five years, he's covered.
Correct, yep.
If I've got somebody who wants to go up to the Mayo Clinic to see if they have Parkinson's, that person is covered.
Correct, yep.
Why is that? Why do they do that? I mean, why is it?
You're not on. Thank you. Why is it not is the question?
I mean, what does it matter when they say if it's in network, out in network? If it's still, you can still use anybody you want to and it's not going to change the price or the cost.
Correct.
So if you're an employee in South Dakota, you have to use Avera?
No, here, here, if you're treating, treating in South Dakota, you have to use Avera.
Correct, but you can travel. If I wanted to get treated in Minneapolis, I live in Sioux Falls, I could drive up to Minneapolis. Anywhere where there's, outside of the service area, you can travel. Just if I'm in Sioux Falls, I need to utilize Avera or an independent facility.
When, when did, uh, Avera and United Healthcare, uh?
November first of twenty twenty-three. Yep.
Well, we need to make a decision today, don't we?
Well, no, we have to make one soon, but.
I think we, we said last meeting, we're going to do it to this, this meeting, right?
Didn't you add this, this meeting, Daddy?
Yeah.
But I think also it's fair that you should have, I mean, you have to remember, we have two other companies that have given you quotes. And you know, they also need to have voice or if you have questions for them.
Are they here or not?
I know, I thought I saw Missouri, but.
You saw, you saw who, Missouri?
Missouri, but I, she must have left.
Was, was one the independent quote and the other one was, uh, Missouri?
Yep.
Um, okay.
Is there a price difference between using Mr. Hunoff's analogy? Is there a price difference between using Missouri River Associates versus RISD? And buying local?
With the M E R P concept, we're able to give you direct pricing as if you're buying direct from Avera. So there, that would be a ten percent savings over, um.
So you're cheaper then?
Yes.
Less expensive.
I mean, I, I, the, the reality again, um, like it was said, that we were government, I mean, a hundred and eighty thousand dollar savings, I don't, I don't see how we can justify to the taxpayers that we wouldn't go that route. It would be similar to if we bid a bulldozer and we went with, you know, Caterpillar. Just because we like Caterpillar and it was a hundred thousand dollars more. I guess every, you know, I've been here a little while, Don's here, been here for, every time we go with Wellmark or Blue Cross, which people like, the next year it's a twenty, thirty percent increase. So we go with another insurance company and then we go back. And we've done that so many times and that's what I fear would happen if we go to Blue Cross again. This, next year it would be another thirty percent increase, which.
I've had a number of conversations with a number of different employees. I mean, a variety of different.
Sure.
You know, between the sheriff's office, auditor's office, the state's attorney's office. Um, I don't think I've spoke to the register of deeds office. But, um, of those fifty employees, they think that they would like to stay with Wellmark. And if they don't stay with Wellmark, they would like the county to put up the premium.
I, I think that picking up the premium is not a bad idea because from what I recall, we, uh, had switched to Avera last time and we made it about halfway through the cycle. And then the, the chairperson at the time, we switched back to Wellmark. And part of the covering the cost difference was for the first time is, um, charging the employees for their health insurance. Because prior to that, that hadn't happened. So I, I would be fine, um, with, with doing that, covering the, um, um, single employees portion of that. I think that's fair.
Don't we already pay single?
Uh, yeah.
Yeah, so why don't we expand that then?
What are, what are you thinking? Like what?
I don't know, I don't get any of this insurance, so it really doesn't. Personally, it doesn't affect me, but, um, how many have family coverage?
Well, I don't, I, I don't know if we, we want to go to family because that would get, but Mr. Hanoff's suggestion was the employee contributions of thirty-three thousand. If we would take that off, the hundred and eighty thousand dollar savings, we'd still save almost, well, a hundred and forty-six thousand, one hundred and forty-eight dollars, uh, which is still significant. And then the other part is the, the cap for next year. Because I, I've, I've still never seen insurance not go up and it's usually twenty, thirty percent.
And I would hope we would have that in writing.
Is it in writing?
Yes.
And then, okay, so.
Absent writing, it wouldn't be enforceable anyway.
If I might add something for the employees that not everybody, um, realizes is, I realize Wellmark is great and they are good and we represent all of them. Um, but also with your Avera facility here, Avera to Avera, employees are going to pay less out of pocket when they do use the facilities. Um, and speaking through experience, not on Avera plan, but, um, Sanford to in Sanford, our office had that, had Sanford one year. I had my, he's now four-year-old son at a Sanford facility and I barely reached my max out of pocket because those discounts are there. And so with, with other carriers, you would end up paying more out of pocket for that same service. So I don't know if employees understand that, but that is something that they will have is from Avera to Avera is that they're going to pay less for, uh, services that they do have when they do use it.
I understand the theory, so.
So I, I think the, I think we're all in agreement that we probably are going to switch to Avera.
Well, I think, you know.
Not excited, not excited about it.
I've heard a lot from employees too about not going to Avera. But that is also from previous experience, that is also previous to them being with United and that same. I think that does change things a lot.
I think that.
I, that's, that's what I'm saying, it's, it's, it's a whole lot different than it was three years ago.
Yeah.
Well, I think the cooperation with United makes it far more palatable.
Does anybody not want to switch to Avera? So I think that's the si- decision, but now we got to decide what, who we're going to go with. I would, I would say, no, you know, I think these guys have been pretty good and you guys offer, was it the, the M E R P, was it?
Yes.
And, and nobody else offers that or?
Uh, there are very few brokers that are aware or have done it or have the contacts for the electronic that we.
Which, which is a, another ten percent savings. And I, I know they're, they're not local, but they do support, you know, they have forty counties under there. And I, I like how she, you can compare insurance and we can make sure we're competitive that, you know, we offer enough benefits to be competitive, but not too many and not too little. And, and I guess I'm, I'm impressed with what you've done here.
Thank you.
I, I would like to know if the county is going to consider any of their other options relative to basic life um, as a benefit for the employees. Although, for example, using the twenty-five thousand dollar benefit, which again, in today's world, isn't that much. Unless you're paying it.
Wanda wants to add benefits? Do you know what the cost would be?
It just, it just seems like we should give them, the employees, something because it seems like every time we turn around, somebody on this commission is giving a lip service to how wonderful our employees are.
I, I think it was a great idea that, um, Mr. Hunoff suggested is to, uh, cover the employee contributions of the thirty-three thousand, eight hundred and fifty-two. And I think that, uh.
I'm sorry, the thirty-three thousand, what?
Brian, do you want to come explain that? And, and, because that, that, if I remember, that's. That's what, that's what we did prior to when we joined Avera and then to switch back mid-year to Blue Cross, Blue Shield, uh, the previous leadership that's gone. Then charge the employees, which we hadn't done prior, is that, am I saying that correctly?
Well, two-thirds of, excuse me, two-thirds of our employees are paying either fifty-two or fifty-nine dollars a month, depending on the deductible they chose. And that adds up to thirty-three thousand dollars a year. And it reminds me, uh, and that started about five years ago, I believe. And it, five years ago, the county did a, a poll of employees. And it's true that a majority of the employees favored Wellmark, all things being equal. But almost all of the employees, all except seventeen, said they favored whichever plan would have the least effect on their take-home pay. And that's what we could achieve by, uh, forgiving that fifty-two slash fifty-nine dollars a month.
So you're saying the county pays that?
Right, they, county will pick up that.
Is it the plan? Is it the plan is why there's some employees that pay?
Right, there's three levels of deductibles, either pay zero, which is about twenty-three employees currently. Yeah, or you pay fifty-two or fifty-nine. That's two-thirds of the employees.
Usually it's the one that are paying is the H S As. Because there's some group of the employees that don't, or can't take the.
More you pay, the less deductible you have.
Yep.
So, so just so I'm clear, your recommendation to save money is A, stay with Avera. Um, make it so the employee contribution is zero on all of these folks, however many there are, forty-nine and twenty-three, um, seventy-five-ish employees. And that, oh. We avail ourself of this M E R P, which I'm not one thousand percent certain that I understand. But I would think that under that situation, we would be saving still, under Mr. Hunoff's theory, a hundred and forty-six thousand, one hundred and forty-eight dollars, that the county could afford to, uh, provide basic life, accidental death and dismembership for twenty-five thousand dollars. Or six thousand, ninety-one dollars and twenty cents, which would still leave a savings of the county to one, using the old math, one hundred and forty thousand dollars. And I'd make that motion.
I'll second that.
You can write it down for me again.
Wanda, could you say that again? I didn't catch it.
Okay.
You want me to write it or you want me to say it? Because I can do both.
So you're also making the, I mean, this motion includes working with RISD, um, benefits?
Yes, do you want me to do it real slow?
Yeah, yes, please.
Okay, I would make the motion that Yankton County switch to, uh, the RISD benefits package, which is recommending Avera with the provision that the county picks up the employee contribution for single, uh, employees, which would be a contribution by the county of a thirty-three thousand, eight hundred and fifty-two dollars, which would save the county um, a hundred and forty-six thousand, one hundred and forty-eight dollars. And that the county also provide at no cost to the employees the basic life and accidental death and dismembership benefit of twenty-five thousand dollars. And the county pick up that cost, which according to the information provided, would cost the county roughly six thousand, ninety-one dollars and twenty cents, making the overall savings to the county one hundred, and this is going to be a few dollars off, one hundred and forty thousand dollars.
So that's.
Yes, that's, um, and that's going to be based on, uh, yes, that is per year. So, uh, grab the right one.
Uh, Don asked if the six thousand dollars was.
Annual.
That's the annual premium.
It's five dollars and forty cents per employee.
It's the annual premium, annual, according to the handouts provided to you, Don.
And we didn't want it to be seventy-two thousand.
And that was my motion.
Yeah, I have a motion by Wanda, second by Ryan, to what Wanda said. Further discussion.
For further discuss, and then we're locked in for two years with the cap? With eight percent max, can you do better, six percent?
Now, I do have one.
The time to negotiate is before the motion is made, not after.
I, I do have one more point of discussion that I believe that the Avera program should include the commission members as far as the free, um, life skate wellness or the wellness center. Even though we are not entitled to.
Under that theory, why don't we get accidental death and dismembership as well?
I had a few, um, counties, I, the healthcare for the commission.
So includes, include the free health benefit at the health center, the Great Life for the five of us commissioners. Okay.
Um, it's a good idea.
Now, this, we have to have this done, you know, by January.
Yep. Well, preferably before.
Implement it. Will you be contacting my office and so we can have someone come down and, and get my payroll part? You know, we'll have to, have to do some kind of, you know, software or.
But yes, so with enrollment, you'll get a, a cen- a census that will show everyone's elections. And so Avera and I will coordinate and get all the information you need for payroll for that. So, and hopefully, um, I hope to take you paperless like we did with Mead County. Um, and that will make your payroll even easier, so.
Well, each, are we just having one plan then? Or does an employee have to fill out in each of form what they want? Like I did with, like, we all had to do with the other insurance? So the different deductible or?
So right now, we base it on what you currently offered before as the three plan options. And so at this point in time, those will be what will be provided and employees can pick which plan that they want. And then if that's something that we need to address this next year, you know, start in the spring, is, is that the best route to go and, and review that? Um, as we get to know, you know, the needs and, and, and the goals a little bit more. Um, but yeah, so it'll be an election form, you know, with all three plans. We'll do group meetings, they pick the, circle the plan they want, sign their name. And then all that data is gathered and put into the enrollment census and provided to Avera and to you for payroll purposes, so.
Is Jerry going to have her modify her, uh, motion to include the Great Life membership for?
Wanda, you want to, we will change your motion to make sure that the five of us also get a free Great, Great Life membership for our families also?
Let me withdraw my motion and start a new motion. I would move that the county go with the RISD benefit package with Avera, provided that there, and provided that there's no out-of-pocket cost for single employees. That cost would be picked up by the county. That the county would pick up the cost of, uh, twenty-five thousand dollars worth of life insurance and accidental death and dismemberment. Uh, and the county picks up that premium. And that the county pick up the premium for a single Delta Dental Plan and that RISD benefits provides, uh, Great Life or Avera benefits for, for the health for five commissioners and their families.
What did you say about dental?
I added dental to this one.
So.
Well, what's the cost for that going to be?
Well, fifty-three dollars times.
So the employees have to take that then?
No, you don't have to take it. You can if you want.
No, I mean, there's, but there's the other.
What, seventy-five times fifty?
But right now we have other dental.
Oh.
We have, you have Delta Dental right now, is that what you're saying?
Yeah, that's what I was saying.
Yeah, so, um, and we can, you can either package Reliance Matrix as a whole or we can keep dental.
Tell me how much it would cost for seventy-five people on Delta Dental for a year. I'm sure you can do that, Mr. Calculator's got to be up there somewhere.
So I, is the employee paying for the dental then?
Uh, currently they pay for it. Now, these rates are based on employee, uh, these are voluntary rates. Um, am I wrong that they might go down if there's an employer contribution? So we might be able to get a rate reduction if the employer is contributing to them. So, but at this time, these rates are based on the employees co- uh, paying them. So about fifty.
I'm asking how much I can modify my motion.
Yep, so, uh, fifty, Dan, fifty-three fifty times, uh, seventy-five. So.
Is that a year? Oh.
Fifty-three fifty is per year or?
That's thirty thousand. We can't do that, sorry. I, I, I strike that portion of.
Sorry, employees.
Yeah, not this year.
Okay.
We'll figure something out.
You need to read it again?
No, I have a motion by Wanda. Can I get a second?
I'll second it.
I have a second by Ryan. All in favor, aye.
Aye. Aye.
Oppose, nay? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Down everything that.
Yeah.
There involved.
Yep.
What do you mean ancillary? You mean the accidental death and dis?
Well, yeah, the dead.
When, when you come down for enrollment, you will, you will present to the employees, the ancillaries.
Yeah.
Yep. I. Okay. And if you could schedule some different times, you know, we have a jail that's on twenty-four hours, ambulance that's on twenty-four hours, and we need to make sure those guys are, get covered too.
Yep. That's a good plan. Yeah.
Well, I think you should just send us all cards.
I'm not a, I'm not a golfer, but I'm.
Thank you, everybody.
Okay.
And I would move to approve the November, I believe it's seventh meeting minutes.
I have a motion by Wanda.
Mr. Chair, before we do the, uh, action, three, uh, two, four, three, six, zero, Z. It, it was the approval for the conditional use permit. I, I guess personally, I would like in there, the, um, the promise of that company to pave. Two ninety-fourth street. Um, I would just like it in that motion because the guy sat right there and he gave us.
What are you talking about?
For the, uh, the motion.
Oh.
Action two, four, three, six, zero. Because he, he told, that was a guarantee by that company and I just, I just want that in that motion to.
The, the, what's, what's in the, what's in the, what's in the road hall agreement at this point in time is to. Reimburse Yankton County one point one million dollars to resurface, uh, Road two ninety-four.
Okay, could, could we add that in there somewhere? Because, you know, this is going to be years before that's all completed and. And I, I know everybody's in good faith, but it's a guarantee. I don't have any, it passed, that's fine, but I just would like that in there because that was part of the. Part of the process.
To do that. Wasn't it in that motion that?
Because I thought, I thought it was in.
It was, it was in the motion.
Yeah, I, I, that, that's just why I want that.
Oh, what you're saying is it was in the motion, but it's not in the minutes.
Exactly, exactly. That's, that's what I'm saying.
Not much, much like no more than eight percent increase for two years for these folks.
Exactly.
Make sure that gets in there.
No, just put it in there.
What?
Just put it in there.
Yeah.
It'll be in the road hall.
Well, yeah, yeah.
I mean, they already, yeah, they already agreed to do that. So.
Well, and, and, yeah, it, it's something that they agreed to and probably, so I guess I don't see an issue with that, but. Is there any issue with that, Rob, that you think?
Yes.
Even though it was in the min- the motion to take care of the road?
It's okay. I think he's saying it's okay to add it to the minutes.
Yeah, yeah, we're just talking about.
Because it was already in the motion.
You know, we, none of us might be here in four years when that's in there and somebody goes and they looked at the record in the minutes and it doesn't say anything about. That in there. So I just, I think it's important, uh. Is that okay, Wanda?
Yeah.
So I get a motion and a second to approve November seven minutes with the addition to, uh, Swan Lake LLC. Uh, agrees to reimburse Yankton County one point one million dollars to resurface Road two ninety-four.
Yes.
That's the verbiage, but that was the motion that we voted on.
Second.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Oppose, nay? Motion carries.
Um, with regard to the transfer designated to undesigned.
Sorry.
To state's attorney, um, diversion expenses. I believe that's to transfer the bonds that were forfeited to the.
The seventy thou- no, we received that grant for the, um, diversion. And they, in last year, you guys, um, assigned seven thousand, was it seven hundred?
I'd move to, I would move to approve the transfer.
Is that different than the opioid expense?
Yes, that's, that's different. What?
You don't want to listen to me talk.
That, that, was that, that was different than the opioid ones?
Yes, I made a motion, you have.
Motion by Wanda, second by Ryan, to approve the transfer designated to. Undesignated to state's attorney's diversion expense. All in favor, aye?
Aye. Aye.
Oppose, nay? Motion carries. Um, claims.
I'd move to approve the first set of claims.
Second.
I have a motion by Wanda, second by Don, to approve the first set of claims. Further discussion? Hearing none? All in favor, aye?
Aye. Make a motion.
Nay.
I make a motion to approve the second part of the claims.
Second.
Got a motion by Ryan, second by Dan, to approve the second part of our claims this evening. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Oppose, nay?
One abstention.
One abstention. October twenty twenty-four auditor treasure report.
No, no, not to twenty-one.
Oh, that's correct. I crossed that out, but I didn't cross all of them. Twenty-one, public comments. Any public comments? Seeing, hearing none, public comments are closed. Commission updates. Wanda?
No.
Brian?
Well, uh, quick one. I hope, uh, the, everyone got to enjoy the, the new YouTube, uh, stream here. And, uh, tonight was our first night of running the meeting with teams running and, uh. Uh, we look forward to making improvements even on what we've done tonight. So.
Right, Ryan, we, we be able to, uh, do remote attendance now?
Oh, yeah, yeah. So we'll be able to send out email and invite to someone who can remotely attend and they can. Attend without having to call in and put a microphone or anything to it.
Who, uh, is that something we'll have Gary do or Patty or, you know, if somebody?
Either, uh, Melissa knows, uh, Gary or. Or even, yeah, Bill.
Okay, great.
Good. Uh, I have none, other than what Preston kind of presented to us tonight for JDI. Don, you got anything out there? Dan?
Uh, yeah, I just want to go over a few things. Uh, the, uh, Opens Meeting Commission had, had a meeting. They haven't met for a while and a couple counties were. Uh, found in violation of open meeting laws. Uh, so it's quite a number. So I just, uh, not that we're doing anything wrong, but just maybe tighten that up a little bit. I know Lincoln County. The three commissioners attended a meeting without notification and, and they got dinged for it. And so. If there's even a chance that all three of us are going to be together, let's just let Patty know and put something in the newspaper. So.
Well, there's a chance we all might run into each other at IV.
Well, I guess then notice it every day. No, but I, I'm talking, you know, like the pathways things and, and some, some of the county Republican stuff or. Or other events that, that we, we do. It's just.
Three event where policy could be discussed.
No, actually, that's not that, like the open meeting law.
Well, that's what, that's what was discussed in there and all of their.
If, if you read, if you read the com- if you read the comment that that commission stated, it said, yeah, could possibly be discussed.
Yeah.
And we, we're doing great work and I just wouldn't want to give the county a black eye. So.
And I would move with it. We go into executive session for air relief issues.
Motion by Wanda, second by Don, to go into executive session. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Oppose, nay?
One, one of the, one of the deals was not, uh, making that, uh, adjourning into executive session.
Yeah, well, we got one funeral to talk about.
You're generous, you're a generous man.
I guess so.
I'm tired of everybody going, oh, thank you, our boy, and then screwing him.
Oh, I know. I was going to grab my bulletproof, but that's headed right way. Wanda, I wanted to yell that she was an ax bear, wanting to chew pretty.
I was going to stand up and say something and she offered dental, but she.
That's a tough blockers.
Go back.
Well, that's not too bad.
Yeah.
I think you used eight different shoes.
Very festive.
Yeah.
Very, very festive.
Let me get there. Have fun this season.
Yeah. How it gets so cold in here?
Nice during the summer, but this time of year, not so much.
No.
I don't understand how. So rooms can be so different. They're quite a bit different from registered needs.
You guys warmer up there than you two are.
A little warmer in the summer than down here.
Yeah. Yes. Did you tell? Was it bad?
No, it wasn't bad, but. Get it.
She's always got me.
I know what you mean.
Oh, thank you. Not really warm enough. I'll go get my coat. Oh. He is. No, I haven't changed yet. Yeah. This one's. Exactly.
I'll be your personal coach and great like all of them.
There, there you go.
I need to start, uh, utilizing that. I was, so I was glad that they, uh, agreed to that.
Uh, it's agreeing is one thing, but actually using it is another.
Make a motion, go back into regular session.
Second.
Motion by Dan, second by Don, to go back into regular session?
I would move.
All those in favor say?
I'm sorry.
Favor, aye? Oppose, nay? Motion carries.
I would move to approve County Welfare MI number twenty-four oh four zero zero two in the amount of five hundred dollars. County Welfare MI twenty-four oh four zero zero three in the amount of five hundred dollars for the aggregate amount of one thousand for mental illness.
Motion by Wanda.
Second.
Second by Ryan. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Oppose, nay?
I would move to approve the burial assistance cost for County Welfare Burial twenty-four. Dash oh four dash zero zero four in the amount of one thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars and pen the request. For six hundred and fifty dollars for opening and closing of the plot.
Second.
Motion by Wanda, second by Ryan. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
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 Oppose, nay? Motion carries.
I would move to pen, uh, County Burial Assistance. CW twenty-three dash zero four zero zero one for the. Uh, cost of opening and closing a grave in the amount of four twenty-six, four hundred and twenty-six dollars. And I would move to pen the County Burial Assistance, County Welfare twenty-four dash two dash zero zero four. For opening and closing of a burial plot. Move to pen those.
Second.
A motion by Wanda, second by Ryan. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Oppose, nay? Motion carries.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
I have a motion by Don, second by Dan, to adjourn. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same saying? Motion carries.
You guys thought you were going to call?
I hope so.
You guys.